The meeting of the Ellsworth City Council for Monday, November 20th, 2023. First item, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, Rules of Order. The Ellsworth City Council meetings are conducted according to Robert's Rules of Order unless otherwise provided for and adopted by the City Council at their annual organizational meeting, which was last week. Before we go to item number four, I request, there's a request to add actually two items to the agenda. The first one is we have two library trustees to take, they're here to take their oath. If we could do that after we accept the minutes. And then the second item is, it was inadvertently left off the agenda to accept the bids for the sale of surplus property. If we could do that after, I think, number seventeen, before we be scheduled the council workshops?
Need a motion?
I can do, yeah, I can either do them separately or together, whichever way you'd like.
Move to add both agenda items. Second.
All those in favor? Wonderful. Thank you.
Can I ask one more thing before you move on?
Sure.
At our organizational meeting, we had had this conversation about moving item nineteen up, oh, after item seven.
This agenda was unpublished.
Oh, it'll be the next one. Okay.
Thanks, Glenn. Okay. Item number four, adoption of minutes from the following meeting, October 16th, 2023, regular council meeting.
Move to adopt minutes.
Second. Discussion? All those in favor? unanimous.
I will have Catherine and Rain. I'm giving these to you in case I'm, if you want to stand some off to the side, okay, if anybody wants to. So raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Rain Perez.
I, Catherine Crane.
Do you swear or affirm?
Do you swear and affirm?
You can go together.
I swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So long as I shall continue.
So long as I shall continue.
A citizen thereof.
A citizen thereof.
So help me God. I state your name.
I, Rain Perez.
I, Catherine Crane.
Do you swear or affirm?
Do you swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As state or office.
As Ellsworth Library Trustee.
For the City of Ellsworth.
For the City of Ellsworth.
According to the Constitution of the United States.
According to the Constitution of the United States.
Laws of the State of Maine.
Laws of the State of Maine.
City of Ellsworth Charter.
The City of Ellsworth Charter.
And ordinances of the city.
And ordinances of the city.
So help me God.
So help me God.
So we get to do this every week? Last week it was me. Thank you.
My name has a.
Can you stop him?
Oh, yes. I can stop it again. I was gonna say, oh, six. And I sign here.
Yes, please.
I just wanted to say it's an honor to be on the Library Board. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Okay, item number five, City Manager's Report.
Evening, councilors. I have a list of things to work down through here, some announcements, and some closure notifications. So to start out, Small Business Saturday is November 25th. We encourage everyone to come and support our small businesses here in Ellsworth. The Christmas tree lighting, which many of you have probably noticed, down in front of the building on the Main Street side, will be also held on the 25th from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. We will be closing this, where the parklet's usually located for Hancock Street, Franklin Street, excuse me, will be closed, and there'll be closure on Store Street during the event and partial closure, closure in the parking area here for, to provide plenty of space for people to come and enjoy the festivities and enjoy the tree lighting. We'd like to thank Dale Sprohl for donating the tree from his property and James Zuchel for, from Zuchel Tree Service for providing labor to cut and move the tree to City Hall, R.F. Jordan for providing piping material for the tree base, and the Public Works Department for all of the work getting the tree installed and the sturdy basin that is there now for a tree to be, for years to come. The Christmas Parade will be on December 2nd, starting from Knowlton Park. The parade route will follow the same as last year. It will come up School Street to Main Street, go down Main Street to the Lower Light, turn and go back up State Street to Knowlton Park. And that is set for December 2nd, and I believe the start time is 4:00 p.m. Does that sound right? Yes, 4:00 p.m. The silent auction in City Hall is still open. The last day to place bids is November 30th. We have some upcoming closures. City Hall and the transfer station will be closed this upcoming Thursday and Friday for Thanksgiving. Normal operating hours will resume on Monday. The library will be closed on Thursday, only on Thursday. No Finance Committee this Friday because of the holiday. The next Finance Committee will be held on December 1st here at City Hall in the council chambers, starting at 8:00 a.m. And city facilities will, will close at noon on Friday, December 22nd for the annual holiday party for the staff. The following Monday, December 25th, city facilities will be closed and reopened on Tuesday, the 26th. That completes my report.
Thank you very much. Any questions, City Manager? Committee reports. First is appointment of the councilors to various city committees by the chairman of the City Council. I provided you a list of the appointments. If you'd please look at them and make sure that you are on the committees that you would like to participate in. If there's something that you feel very strongly that you'd also like to, like to participate in that I haven't included you on, please let me know so that I can give the information to Tony.
There, you want to know the ones that aren't on this list?
Yes.
We'll also add the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee, Arbor Commission, and the Communications Subcommittee to this list, unless anybody can think of any others that are.
You said, "Calm Harbor and."
And Communications Subcommittee.
What about any of the school subcommittees, like the, I'm on the school strategic planning, and then I think.
I'm on a preschool one.
Preschool one, and you're on a.
And I'm on the UCTC one, yes, so.
All right.
Yeah. Maybe I can, you and I can go over that tomorrow, and I'll give you the complete list, because those aren't changing.
Okay.
So, I'll stop by tomorrow.
Madam Chair, we'll also, you'll also need to appoint a counselor to the negotiation team for contract negotiations. You've got three this year that will have to be negotiated.
Starting soon.
February, March, usually.
Yeah, I mean, as soon as the, we haven't been notified yet by the units, but I'm sure they will after the, shortly after the first of the year.
Okay. We do have one council that's interested. I just didn't appoint her as part of this. That will do it. Next is appointment of Matthew Welch to the Appeals Board, acceptance of Mike White's Do we have anything on that, Tony, or just?
I don't. Lori might have some comments on your Appeal Board. Mr. White has moved out of the City of Ellsworth.
Oops, come on.
Mr. White has moved out of the City of Ellsworth, and Mr. Matt Welch, who is, I think, owner or part-owner of Friends and Family Market, has taken the position. Put in a request that he'd be interested in filling that.
Move to appoint Matthew Welch to the Appeals Board.
Second. Any discussion?
Can we add an acceptance of the resignation of Mike White as well? See that?
I thought we did that last time. But, yes.
Seems like we did.
But I, we could. And accept Mike White's resignation.
Is there a second? Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor? Next, appointment of Jeff Gordon as an alternate to the Harbor Commission.
Good evening, council. We have two open spots on our Harbor Board, alternate spots, and Jeff is a resident of Aquarius Lane and also has a boat at the harbor.
Move to approve the appointment of Jeff Gordon as the alternate to the Harbor Commission?
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, approval of community, of a Community Development Advisor Committee to help with the CDBG project.
Jana Richards, Economic Development Director. Apologies for just getting you the information this evening. You have in front of you some committee member, committee member names and their role. Last month, I was here to discuss quite a bit of submitted requirements for the Public Service Community Development Block Grant. I forgot to have this committee officially approved the members appointed, as well as we are looking for a volunteer from the council to also be on the committee. And there's a suggested motion here to approve the formation of the committee. It's an ad hoc committee, so once the grant is over, it will go away. And, you know, if you have any interest in homelessness or at risk of homelessness, that's what this program that we have applied for and gotten funds for is about. So just to give you a chance to be part of a program and working with a community partner that helps to combat homelessness and at-risk of homelessness. Yeah, and also in this is just the requirements from the Community Development Block Grant about creating the committee and having the council approve and appoint the members. And then there's some bullet points on here on what the committee would actually be doing. And so they are charged with organizing opportunities for the public to be involved in the program, should that be necessary and deemed necessary. Publicizing and marketing the program, handling any complaints that are surrounding the, the program. There's actually a protocol for handling complaints when they come to Community Development Block Grants. And also the finances, so how, since the city is the recipient of the funds, and we will be granting those funds to the public service providers, so talking about how that's going to happen as this rolls out, and doing some program evaluation. So if it's helping the community the way that it's supposed to or not, should we pivot and that sort of thing.
Any questions of Jana?
During the time of this committee, how often do you suspect the meetings will be?
Yeah, so I'm hoping that once we receive the funds from the state, we'll have a kickoff meeting, and then after that, I am assuming bi-monthly, so not every month, but allowing us to have that discussion when we get the funds, to talk about how the funds will be transferred to the organization, then letting them kick off the program, giving them a couple months to run the program, and then we'd have a chance to evaluate how things are going. So, yeah, I think bi-monthly makes the most sense for the term of the grant period, which should be about a year or so.
Do you have any idea of when you will receive the grants and have that kickoff meeting? Will it be like the beginning of next year?
Yeah, so ARSA middle is due in December, and so I'm hoping that by January, February, we should have the funds.
Sorry, this is last minute, but does, would anyone like to volunteer to help Jana?
I mean, if you want to be on another committee, you're welcome to. But if you don't, I'm willing to. But if it's a particular interest of yours, by all means.
I don't mind if you both want to be on the committee. That's okay. We can have two.
We can have two?
Yeah.
Does that sound good?
I may, I may have missed it, Jana, can the, can you describe a little bit more about what you anticipate the grant, how it's going to be used as far as?
The grant, the grant funds?
Yeah.
Yep, so this is a Public Service Community Development Block Grant. So we partnered with Families First Community Center on North Street. They're running a new program called the Helping Hour. So they will be open, designated hours per week where people who are either homeless or at risk of homelessness can go in and speak with one of their staff people or their volunteers in order to get services that they might need, assistance applying for housing or for heating assistance. They will also take a portion of the grant funds to put toward heating assistance, as well as housing assistance, navigating any of the Section 8 voucher system, also access to like tangible household items that if you are a person that is getting a home for the first time, that you may not have, like lamps, things of that nature. Yeah, I think that about rounds it out. And then some funding toward marketing and publicizing the program through like Star 97.7, the Ellsworth American, local media.
Is the idea if this is successful and it's evaluated, that we'd work towards finding a way to make this more permanent, or?
Yes, so the matching funds are actually coming from a significant portion of their fundraising. So it would be great if, you know, they can continue those fundraising efforts and be able to make this more sustainable over time. The additional funds through the Community Development Block Grant allows them to do it for a longer period of time and to assist more individuals than they would based on their own fundraising.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Jana has provided a suggested motion.
Move to approve the formation of the Community Development Advisory Committee, which will be an ad hoc committee to work on the city's 2324 Public Service Community Development Block Grant, and to appoint the members listed to the committee, as well as two city councilors.
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you.
Okay, number seven, citizen comments. This is the portion of the agenda where we invite citizens of the city to discuss anything that they would like. We just asked that you keep it to three minutes. And the other is, is to talk about something that's not on the agenda. Any items that are on the agenda, you'll have an opportunity to speak on those at that time. Come on up to the podium.
Good evening, council and city members. My name is Dale Basher, and I live and work in the City of Ellsworth, and I serve, very fortunate to serve as the Housing Director for Down East Community Partners. Last year, we, we put on a concert to warm a winter's night at the Grand, and it was very successful. We had over 200 people there, and, and we're planning to do that again this year on February 24th. We were, this year, I don't know if a lot of people know it, but our, our heating assistance was cut by over 50%. So a lot of people that received like a $1,200 benefit last year probably won't receive in between $500 and $600 this year. So the need is ever greater than it has been, at least in my 14 years of working at this organization. So having a special emergency-type fund, like our THAW program, has been critical in keeping people warm, especially in these trying times. So we are asking to be approved for another $1,000, like we did, like we asked for last year, and it was a very successful event, thanks to you. And we were, we would like to bring this item to your agenda for next month, if possible. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak? Okay, we'll move on. Presentation of awards. Small Business Day proclamation. Do I have that? Got it. All right. City of Ellsworth Small Business Day proclamation, November 25th, 2023. Whereas the City of Ellsworth, Maine celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. According to the United States Small Business Administration, there are currently 33.2 million small businesses in the United States, representing 99.9% of all businesses with paid employees in our country. And whereas 32% of these small business owners in the United States say inflation is their biggest business challenges, challenge right now, and 20% of new small businesses close within a year, only with, with only 35% of new businesses making it to their 10th anniversary. And whereas 68 cents of every dollar spent in a small business stays in the local community. And further, every dollar spent at a small business creates an additional 48 cents in local business activity. And whereas 72% of consumers report the Small Business Saturday inspires them to shop small and dine at independently-owned restaurants, and up to 65% of small businesses' annual revenue was generated during the holiday season last year. And whereas the City of Ellsworth supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and are critical to the overall health of the United States. And whereas organizations across the country have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City of Ellsworth hereby proclaim Saturday, November 25th, 2023, as Small Business Saturday in Ellsworth. And be it further resolved that the City of Ellsworth urges the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. And I would like to add, that I do, and I, I know the city manager had already mentioned it, but Saturday is Small Business Saturday, and all of our businesses downtown and on High Street and all around the city will be open, and it'd be great if people kick it out and support them.
And then come to the tree lighting.
And then come to the tree lighting, and something else going on, too, that day. A lot.
There's a craft fair that day, too.
There's a craft fair.
I think you can make ornaments at the library that day, too. There's lots of stuff.
There's a lot going on, a lot going on. The next is a special, special presentation by the city clerk.
So I just wanted to say something about a very special election worker that we have. She has a true heart of community service. Sylvia Locke has dedicated more than 25 years of service to the Ellsworth Clerks Department and many more years prior to that in New York where she lived. In her 25 years, Sylvia has worked at least 57 elections that I can confirm. The last couple November elections, we have also celebrated her birthday, which is usually a day or so prior to the election. We've had cake and sang, and the voters of Ward Four have sung along with us and got cake on their way out. So Sylvia, your dedication and service are unmatched, and we are forever grateful for your continued service. Happy 100th year, and we are inviting you back for not one, but three elections in 2024.
Thank you.
It's beautiful.
And here's a for you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. You can put that in the study.
Okay. It's a beautiful plaque.
I wish I had my camera. Oh, I did. I can't get a big camera.
No, I enjoy working for the City of Ellsworth.
Yeah. There is water in that, so just be careful. One more picture, Sylvia.
Okay.
Or if you could turn this way.
Great, thank you.
Turn this way. We're turning your page.
Celebrity. There we go.
It's hard to follow that, isn't it? Okay, the next, I guess the wording on the agenda is a little bit incorrect. The next item is a presentation of the Smart Growth Award and plaque from Grow Smart Maine, received in collaboration with the Heart of Ellsworth. Kara?
Thank you, everyone. That's a tough act to follow. Congratulations. My name is Kara Romano. I'm the Director of Heart of Ellsworth, and two years ago now, in collaboration with the City of Ellsworth Economic Development Department, specifically Jana, Jana Richards, our Economic Development Director, we embarked on a year-long study for asset mapping of our, of our downtown, and the title of the project was Manifesting Maine. We worked together with the consultants and then did a lot of community outreach with folks in the downtown and surrounding areas of the city to sort of try and figure out what our opportunities were and what our assets are in the downtown. And then together, we put together a really nice study that was then gifted to the City of Ellsworth, as well as gifted to other groups, and, and copies of it ended up existing in other areas of the city. There's a copy of the entire asset mapping for the, in the City of Ellsworth's Public Library. So we, unbeknownst to us, a couple of statewide awards were received by the, the asset mapping process. And so in 2023, we received, as the City of Ellsworth and Heart of Ellsworth, two prestigious awards, one from the Maine Downtown Center, and then the other tonight that I'm here to present with Nancy, our newest, one of our newest city councilors, the Smart Growth Award. And I am actually, if it's okay, gonna let Nancy kind of talk a little bit about the Smart Growth, because I'm not sure if I would do the process justice. And then maybe perhaps we can then give the award to the city, so, or however this goes.
Madam Chair, can I do this? So as, as Head of Grow Smart Maine, I was thrilled to see that the City of Ellsworth was nominated. We've been doing Maine Smart Growth Awards. This is our sixth year, and eligible people, plans, and projects can be nominated, either self-nominated or for others. We have criteria about lasting impact, statewide significant, statewide significance, and we also have a panel of independent judges. There are four judges that are outside of Grow Smart, not staff, not board members, and it's a mix of conservation, development, and partly in downtown organizations. And so the nomination, we had a fair number this year, and this is one of four that was awarded at our summit on October 19th in Waterville. And I think what distinguished this was the, the breadth of the research that was done and the collaboration between the city and, and the Heart of Ellsworth, and the outcome being meaningful and ready to be moved forward and make it. And it's a, it's a wicked cool plaque. Do you want to hold up the plaque for folks to see?
Yeah. So this one is for the, the City of Ellsworth, and so I will, I don't know, I feel like you should be presenting this more than me, but.
No, I think.
Thank you. Perhaps, yeah, and also Jana Richards should be recognized for countless hours of dedication to many meetings with.
It is a wicked cool.
It's wicked, and Maine-made. It's a woman in Wyndham who makes them.
Oh, it's beautiful.
Michelle, can I say one more thing while we're still in the awards section? I heard through the grapevine today that our Chief of Police and City Manager was just sworn in as the President of the Maine Chiefs of Police Association? So I just think we should congratulate Glenn on that.
I just have a quick question on that, new item that I have in front of me. It's staying red, it's not going green. Is that just because it's not? Thank you very much.
Can I?
Have a good night.
Okay, that's all right, I'll take care of it. The next one, this one we're trying to. Okay, item number nine, unfinished business discussion and potential action to enforce Chapter 56 via a consent agreement with Maine Organics. Lori?
Our attorney is here to explain the process.
Yes, good evening, counsel. My name is Diana O'Connell, and I'm an attorney with Rudman Wenshaw. I'm stepping in tonight for John Hamer, who prepared the consent agreement that I believe is in your packet. And I believe that this was approved for him to prepare it at your last meeting. So if you have any questions on that, I'm here to try to answer those for you. Essentially, as you probably know, the purpose of having an administrative consent agreement is to come to a resolution on a violation and avoid having to go to the expense of an enforcement action. This one here is, sets out the background of the matter, and it sets out essentially what would happen if they fail to comply with it. I believe that copies also have been sent to the property owners. I'm not sure if they can.
Ian.
Does anyone in the council have any discussion on this? Questions?
Questions? I watched this at the last city council meeting, and curious, I guess, a little bit more about the process. Has there been conversation, and that this really is a consent of the two? You know, the city and the business? A little bit of background on the process that got us from last month to this month would be helpful.
Yep. And I, I'm not entirely sure of what's happened in the intervening month, but this is the first draft that's really been presented to the council at this point for, to look over and approve, I think, before it really moves forward to having further discussions with the property owners.
Okay. So this is the beginning of the process?
Correct.
Thank you.
Lori might have matches say, I don't know if you've had any further discussions.
No, I just submitted by email a copy of the consent agreement for his review, so he could see the same thing you were reviewing.
It seems the key clause here is compliance means stopping odors detectable beyond property lines. Was there talk or thoughts about how the detection happens, either from code or legally?
So there is a odor testing kit. We don't have one. But I think it was mentioned in the planning board meeting before approval that they would consider buying one. But if I'm gonna be the one doing it, I think the city should probably purchase that. But I have a nose too, so all I'm doing is, the test is very similar to going there and smelling it, then smelling this N-Butanol chemical, and it takes it away from my nose, and then re-smelling. So it's really not something I stick across the property line, or I hold across the property line to detect an odor. So it's a little bit of a bizarre thing.
Yeah, it's still your nose regardless.
Right, that's it.
It's not like it's some number.
I prefer not to smell anything chemical up my nose if I don't have to.
So that's the test, Lori? Is you use the, how much is the, do we know how much the test costs?
It's between 500 and 1,000.
And how many times can it be used?
Well, you can keep using it.
Okay. Well, I think we'd want some kind of test like that, because unfortunately Lori's not gonna be with the city much longer. I think we want some kind of consistent baseline, rather than, you know, one person's stink is another person's, you know, I don't, doesn't, ask my wife, I can never smell anything bad. I think, I think we want some, something consistent in that regard, to be fair to the landowner and the city, as far as, and if it's, you know, I think one thing we want to consider is if it's a cost between 500, $500 and $1,000, where that money comes from for purchase.
So Lori, so, but does this thing we're going to purchase, is it, does it record anything? Or is it just puts, does it say that there's an odor?
Yes, I, I think it would say, I, I'm not certain. I really don't know exactly how it's used. The DEP was gonna have one, or may have one, that they may use, but I, again, I think if I'm going to be responsible for making this determination, I should have something that I, that's been approved for this type of odor complaint.
Yeah, just, I think it's in everyone's best interest that we have more clarification in this consent agreement, as exactly, or to the best as we can, how this odor will be, you know, this test will be applied, again, so it's fair to everyone, so there's a, so I don't know what that looks like. Maybe it's, we ask council to draft something up, and we get a better sense of what this test looks like, and then maybe one thing to consider is if the cost, if it, you know, the cost be part of the consent agreement payment from the property owner, or, or something along those lines. So I think that's, again, I think we just want to have, because this goes into perpetuity as well, so we want to have some consistency.
Yeah, but speaking of perpetuity, it was my understanding last meeting that the consent agreement was to ratify the problem, not to just have consistent money coming in from, from fines and fees. It was to actually incentivize a fix, so there probably should be some intent.
I think in that regard, it would make sense to have some sort of measurable standards put in the consent agreement, and maybe some milestones of ways that the operation can be modified in order to reduce the odors. That's something I can work with the property owners.
Table? Table, too. Move to table, though. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in paper? Okay, this is, the auditor is on here. The next item is the review of the FY 2022 audit with RHR Smith.
Thanks for coming in, yes.
Does he still, does he still mute or sound?
The microphone isn't crossed off, but the video is.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, can you get your video on?
Yeah, listen, I'm sitting in a car pulled over on the side of the road. I don't think you guys want my video on.
Because we don't need to see them.
We could just see ourselves here. Do you want to introduce this?
Finance Director, come on down. You're the next contestant.
For my first act tonight. This is Ron Smith. He is the Head of RHR Smith, who does the audits for the city. This is a discussion of the audit of fiscal year '22. I was not here in fiscal year '22, but I know a lot about the audit, so he is the best person to make this presentation, so I will leave it to Ron. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Did everybody hear me?
Yes.
We can.
Yeah, listen, I apologize for not being there physically in person. I just, I just could not make it this evening. But, but both Glenn and Anne thought it would be good with a couple of new council members to kind of like pick off, and a couple of months ago in September, when I talked to the Finance Committee and went over the '22 audit, kind of where we were at in '23, and, you know, what's, you know, what's left to be done, and, you know, and really, you know, some of the, some of the talking points in '22 and '23, and I'll, I'll, I'll kind of recap that conversation, you know, Michelle, if you think that that would be beneficial for the new councilors?
Yes, please.
Yeah, so, so going back to that, financially, you know, to kind of start off in a, in a good place here, is financially, the, the city, you know, is on good financial grounds operationally for the city itself and for the school department. I had a chance a few, a few months ago, I believe, to, you know, talk to the, to the school department and make a presentation, you know, financially, you know, at '22, what we're seeing for '23, same with the city. Financially, the city, you know, is, and the school department are both financially, you know, certainly, you know, very solid, you know, in, you know, in their footings. Couple of areas, concerns that we see with the city is a sewer operational deficit that, you know, kind of maintained itself at about $4 million, you know, on 6/30/22. We're kind of seeing that land at about the same place in 6/30/23. And the city, you know, the, some capital project funds, you know, when the financing clears in this audit that we're about to embark in in 6/30/23, you know, even with the debt that the city committed to some of its capital projects, looks like some of these capital projects were over budget, you know, over the past, probably as many as three going back four years, and kind of like evolving into today. And we're putting that mass somewhere, you guys, around about a million dollars, you know, that we, that we, we're really trying to put our arms around right here and kind of see, you know, which projects went over budget. So those are the two, you know, financial concerns that we saw, you know, coming up through '22, going through into '23. But the real story is, you know, is kind of the, you know, the, 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 the financial policy procedural fiscal struggles, you know, of the city. You know, some years back, the city lost a lot of institutional knowledge, you know, in its finance department with some longstanding finance people, and I, I, I would probably say, as we talked about at the Finance Committee meeting, there's been a lot of turnover in the finance department, and, you know, and a lot of that institutional knowledge left the city. A lot of the accounting pedigree, you know, that came in after that, it was really, it wasn't there, you know, is, is the best way I can say it. Certainly some of the accounting struggles, and some of the internal struggles to move pieces of paper, you know, from point A to point B, utilization of many different softwares, utilization of spreadsheets to kind of create a map amongst the softwares. There was a lot of struggles in the city finances, which, you know, literally, you know, for the past four, four, four and a half years, has literally led to the city struggling, you know, with its internal financial best practices. Certainly, we, we put a lengthy management letter in place for the, you know, for the, for the city, and, you know, so had some conversations with, you know, kind of like, like addressing what those were, and what the blueprint would be to, you know, to get to some best practices. But I think that the turnover in the finance department, you know, going back some time, losing some of your longstanding people, and, you know, quite frankly, literally almost 100% turnover in that finance department over the past year, year and a half, that's really hurt the city and put it in, put it, put them behind the eight ball, you know, as far as, you know, you know, let alone giving us information to audit, you know, correct information to audit. That's really, you know, I kind of think, you know, financially, even though I can kind of paint a real good picture, and that's why I started off on that, you know, on that footing, you know, really kind of the struggles on how to get the members on the piece of paper, you know, have been chronic issues with the city. It was an all-hands-on effort by the, by the city finance department, by the school finance department, you know, to bring fiscal year '22 across the finish line. I understand that your, one of your key finance people's left, so we're working with Anne to, you know, try to bring this chat of accounts implementation across the finish line. That's been, that, that has been a challenge in itself to, you know, work with your new software company, and work with your payroll company to create the necessary bridges, but, you know, there's, there's, there's been a lot of struggling, and, you know, we just hope that, you know, that sometime, as I told the Finance Committee before March 31st, you know, that there, we should have an ambitious timeline to be presenting this all, this audit all in front of you guys by March 31st, so we can really kind of get back, back on track and beat the, you know, a lot of the regulatory deadlines, which is March 31st of 2024. We're really hoping to get there, you guys, we really are, but there's a lot of work to do, you know. You know, again, with some of the recent turnover you've had in your finance department, we continue to work with Anne, and, you know, for lack of a better way, to kind of help the city and her unstruggle, but, you know, there's, there's another Herculean effort going on, you guys, and, you know, and it's all hands on deck again for the '23 audit, so.
Any questions? Counsel Helen?
You mentioned the sewer department. Any suggestions?
Yeah, I mean, we've got, we've gone over rate increases, we've gone over rate studies, kind of like the, you know, the chronology. Glenn, help me out. Wasn't there, you know, discussion and kind of some movement, you know, this past fiscal year going into this fiscal year to kind of take a deeper dive into the math of the, you know, the various components, operationally, infrastructure, and various budgets of the, various, the, the line items within the sewer budget, and bringing in the outside engineers and doing such?
Yes. Yep, we did that for the, for the bio solids, not the full operation, just the, that process.
And I think that that's something that you guys are gonna have to explore, you know, again, just, you know, just really to, you know, to kind of get there and really check the math on the operations, because it's pretty clear that, you know, operationally, you know, it looks like for the past few years, you've maintained, but the problem is, is there was a hole to kind of dig out of, and, and that's really where the plan needs to start, is what are we gonna do to kind of like dig out the hole now that we've kind of, you know, for lack of a better word, stocked, you know, this, 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 this increase of this deficit getting bigger and bigger? It appears at that stock, you know, but again, we got a hole to climb out of, and I think that there's gonna be some, 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 many solutions, and we talked about this a little, you know, at the Finance Committee, you know, level, and, and one of the solutions really is kind of, you know, putting some debt in there, you know, looking that long term to, you know, to put into the sewer, and looking at that as an option to, you know, to kind of like bridge the gap, you know, crawling out of that, that was accumulated, you know, up until, we've only got two years of institutional knowledge from Ellsworth, but this is, this is kind of a longstanding problem over at the sewer, and, you know, for the past two years, you know, it's kind of been maintained and stabilized, but there's gonna be the, I think, some short-term things and long-term things, and I think debt would be something to consider as well, so.
If I may, I think, Ron, we talked about that in Finance Committee, and, and talking about the way to offset that depreciation number, because that really, that $20 million plant, that number is still so incredibly high, it's hard to overcome. And.
Michelle, the good news is for the city and for all government and the state, I mean, the state's got $2.5 billion that's just starting to get released to the localities for infrastructure and needs upgrades. Rural development's gonna be a key player to that, EPA, the bond bank, Michelle, and I think, as I, you know, said at that Finance Committee, as we start to get more of the details here over the next six to eight months, I really think that the city could be a big, you know, benefactor there, as it really kind of looks, it looks at itself in the mirror and develops that short-term and long-term plan to go get some of this money that's gonna be out there and available for a lot of the communities, for infrastructure needs, of which your wastewater certainly would fit that profile.
Thank you. Does anyone from the audience have any questions? Former auditor? This is not a public hearing, but. Anyone else?
Whose job in cities would that be to look into infrastructure grants and such that Rod just mentioned?
It's the Finance Director, does, usually does most of that, but also, yeah, personally, I feel that until we get the '23 audit, we do have, by the way, we have many grants right now for the wastewater. We have, at the High Street Pump Station, we have the Water Street Pump Station, we have several very large principal forgiveness loans that are out there, so we are doing that, it's just, we can definitely continue with the, with that plan. But what, but hopefully, once we get '23 done, and we have numbers that we can really use, the hope is to have a, a good capital improvement plan, including for, those are enterprise grants, so they're supposed to be pay for themselves. So there's, there's a, you know, a hope that once we get this, this '22s cleared up, get '23 cleared up, and start on some really good numbers that we can, through the Finance Committee, make some good plans.
And so you're, and he was saying, hopefully, that'll be done before this year's budget season, so that we'll have that information heading into that.
Yep.
Ron, that's, so we'll be doing our budget, probably, hopefully, the end of February, we'll start workshops, maybe beginning of March. Is it still possible to have the 23 audit completed by then?
Yeah, we are, that, that's why I'm spending so much time with Ann right now, and I know with kind of the departure of May, it was a big loose end, we can't let fall, because we're literally working with, you know, paychecks for the payroll and benefit data and Cassell to create that map, to quickly get it into Munis and take advantage of the bridge now that, that we're developing with Cassell, and we're really hoping to get you guys some reports sometime real, real, real soon in January here, you know, because we're going to test it out, they've created us a testing site, you know, so Ann and I can look for, but we just got some, we, we got some work to kind of, you know, make sure that we don't bring in some of those struggles, you know, of your, of your Tyler software system into Cassell, and that's really what we're working hard on right now, folks, is that bridge, you know, to get you that information, budget and actual, you know, and where you're at physically this year, and kind of give you a, a blueprint to where we think you guys landed at 63023, so you can go in armed with this budget cycle with some information, for sure, so.
Thank you. Does anyone else?
Cassell, Cassell's telling us, Cassell's telling us, you know, literally, we're, we'll be talking about the, the migration of this data and using these bridges in December, you guys, so that's good news, you know, gives us, you know, about four to six weeks to, you know, to test this out, make sure that everything comes over as, as, as seamlessly as possible. We all know that that doesn't work, you know, quite to plan, but, you know, we really have spent a lot of time, you know, making sure that when the data gets imported into Cassell, you guys are going to have up-to-date financial reports and, you know, and we'll have the math on where things ended at 63023, so you guys will have that as you go into, you know, the, the, the front end of your budget season.
That would be wonderful.
Yes, it would.
Yes. Ron, thank you very much, we appreciate you taking the time to come in.
Yeah, everybody take care, be safe, happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Thanks, Ron.
Thank you, bye-bye. We do not have a consent agenda tonight, so on to number 11, new business, public hearing in action on the following business licenses. Stephen Curtin, DBA Steamy Buddha Cafe, 50 Church Street for renewal, state liquor license, class one, two, three, and four, an upgrade to city class C license from Vic Chiller. Public meeting is open, anyone like to speak? Don't make me laugh. Public meeting is closed. Move to approve? Any discussion?
All paperwork?
Everything's been monitored.
Thank you. All those in favor? Okay, unanimous. Number two, Ryan Launer, DBA Strike and Slice, 25 Easter, Eastward Lane, Suite Six for renewal, city class C license and state liquor license, class one, two, three, and four. Public hearing is open, anyone like to speak? Public hearing is closed.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Manus. And finally, ETC LLC DBA Dion's, 35 Eastward Lane, for renewal of State Liquor Tennis Club, class three and four. Public hearing is open, anyone like to speak? Public hearing is closed. Counsel?
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion? All those in favor? Manus. Okay, item number 12, public hearing in action on council order number 112000, request of the city planner to approve amendments to chapter 56.
Hey, everybody. So, in your packets, you should have a memo, kind of walking through all the changes. Things are a state requirement, I probably won't spend too much time on them, I'll just briefly explain them and say that we have to do them. So, to start, you have, uh, chapter 56, article four, shoreline zoning, one of the new requirements from the states, I guess to provide the public some background, the state passed LE 2003, which is a piece of legislation that is meant to try and encourage housing opportunities in Maine, it really relates to accessory dwelling units and affordable housing developments, and so there were certain requirements based on this law. So for chapter 56, article four, part of that law is that you can't outright ban two-family dwelling units anywhere in a zone, and currently in our shoreline zones for the resource protection and drinking water protection zones, it specifically lists a ban on those. So all other dimensional density requirements remain unchanged, but we're just removing that wording that specifically outlines the ban.
Madam Chair, do you want questions as we go or at the end?
Um, which is easy for me.
Or I can ask you?
We can go as we, as we go.
Then if I may, a question on article four, as I was reading this, um, LE 2003 called for the end of exclusive, single-family residential, where residential is allowed. So I was, the, the question that came to mind is, do we currently allow residential within resource protection zone and drinking water protection zones?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted that clarification before we kept going, thank you.
And that's the only changes in article four, though, so it's just on the table of uses, there are two sentences that have to be removed to come into compliance. So, so next section of chapter 56 is article eight, performance standards, there were two major changes, one dealing with the accessory dwelling units and another dealing with affordable housing developments in section 826, I'll just cover that real quick, which is the affordable housing development bonuses, this is all required by state law, I just really took word for word from LE 2003 what they're requiring us to include, and so those are the only changes in that portion of article eight. And then in, uh, section 805 is where it covers accessory dwelling units, where some changes have been made that are not required. One of these changes is currently, as the code sits, an accessory dwelling unit cannot exceed 50% of a principal building's floor area, and so the board, after discussions, we've included a max size altogether, where it can't be more than 50% of the principal building's floor area, but 50% of that building's floor area would be greater than 750 feet, it has to stop at 750 feet, that's the max size an accessory dwelling unit can be. And then, the state required us to include a minimum size for ADUs, which is 190 square feet. The types of accessory dwelling units, previously, this has changed slightly previously in the code, it did not list having an attached, single-family dwelling unit as an accessory dwelling unit, so we've changed that to include, so you have an accessory dwelling unit within a home, attached to a home, or as a new structure altogether, separate from the single-family home. The accessory dwelling unit requirements, and exceptions, this is all based on LE 2003, so listing out the, if, if you could not construct, um, an ADU on your lot, so Ellsworth is pretty permissive with ADUs anyway, we allow them in essentially every zone, but if, you still have to follow some dimensional requirements and density requirements to build an ADU in some of the zones, but LE 2003 changes that, where density is no longer something that's looked at for, for ADUs, your first one, but we only allow one on a lot. And so then, the bonuses for all the ADUs are provided underneath of that, and these are all state required. And then, so you don't have to include more parking for an ADU, you don't have to meet necessarily the density and lot size requirements of a zone to build an ADU, and the setbacks, Ellsworth already did this anyway, but let me spell it out again, just if you build a ADU within the same structure as a single-family dwelling unit or attached to it, the setbacks are the same as the single-family dwelling, it doesn't count as having two dwelling units, so it's not like doubling the setbacks or anything like that. One thing that we are changing or adding that LE 2003 does not require is kind of a step into short-term rental restrictions, so again, we're already very permissive with accessory dwelling units in Ellsworth. If LE 2003 is now permitting someone to build one on a lot, where we, it's probably a lot where we necessarily don't really want a ton of development or want ADUs necessarily, so if LE 2003 is going to allow someone to construct this now, we'd prefer it to be for year-round rentals for housing, and so part of the short-term rental regulation is if it's a, if it's a, a ADU that has to use LE 2003 to be constructed as part of this article of occupancy, which you have a draft of, which adds the restriction for this, it has to be for the first 10 years of its existence, year-round rental, not short-term rental. Any questions on ADUs?
The year-round was a, a minimum of 28 days, I think?
Uh, it was, yeah, it was, so the shortest month is February, so it was if it was less than 28 days, it's considered short-term rental. Any other questions on the performance standards? So then, and finally, there were, oh, not finally, for article 11, the only change was a reference to article eight, where it discusses the affordable housing parking bonuses, article 11 is just parking standards in general, so someone might look there for those bonuses and not see them, so it's just giving them a direction to look to article eight, where they're explained. Then in article 14, there are a number of definitions that have been added, so including affordable housing, defining that based on how LE 2003 looks at affordable housing and the definitions they use, I'll cover those, LE 2003 specific ones first, centrally managed water system, comparable sewer system, doesn't need a growth area, which we really should have had defined before, but it's just in the comp plan, we'll just determine where those are, currently it's our urban core, and then... Pretty sure those are most of the LE 2003 required definitions that have been added. And then some of the optional ones, changes that were made are to kind of the lodging and dwelling unit related terms in our ordinance, so creating more specificity for hotel, motel, allowing a boarding house to, you're not really considered a boarding house unless you're giving a long-term stay of 30 consecutive days or longer, bed and breakfasts have a size limit now, maxed at 30 occupants, writing definition of cooking facilities, we currently enforce this definition of cooking facilities, we're looking at what creates a dwelling unit or not, but now it's spelled out so that developers know ahead of time. There was some moving around of definitions, not really adding them, just replace, moving them around within the ordinance. And, yep, any question on those definitions?
I do have one question, is, I mean, it sounds like there's some, some good changes in here, especially with clarification, but do you have concerns, or this Lori is code enforcement officer, have concerns that some of these things are going to cause or may cause issues down the road?
Do you have any?
Such as change in parking standards, and, I mean, if we're going to have people parking in the roads, or, you know, just things like that, is there?
I mean, I, I don't necessarily agree with the state that there shouldn't be some type of parking requirement for an ADU, but it, the state's requiring that, we follow that, so it's not really up to us.
We don't have, right now, anything for duplex, so that's two units, two dwellings. It doesn't start until you go three or four, where you have to add a one and a half parking spaces per unit. So it's not really changing that too much for me.
Right, it's just, in, in practice, it may create an issue, but it shouldn't, it should be a case-by-case basis, where it probably won't affect too much.
Thank you.
One thing I did forget to mention was the addition of tiny homes as a definition, which is just expanding, again, the types of housing that people can kind of have more guidance on within the city.
What is the definition of tiny home? Just by size?
Uh, it's pretty much by size, but it's like, a dwelling unit permanently constructed on a frame or chassis that may be placed on a foundation and designed for use as a permanent single-family home or an accessory dwelling unit that complies with national standards for plumbing, propane, fire, life safety in construction, and then does not exceed 400 square feet, and then does not exceed any dimension allowed for operation on a public way, and then also, if it is on a chassis, it can't be powered by a motor.
And it still has to be greater than that 190 minimum?
That's the minimum size, and then the maximum size is 400 square feet.
I'll just say, I was on the planning board when we worked on this with the, the planning staff, and I would say, there was a lot of thought and conversation and multiple meetings where this was addressed, I think the end product is a careful and thought-out proposal for the city council.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Public hearing is open, is there anyone that would like to ask any questions, make any comments? Public hearing is closed. Just, counsel?
If you're looking for further discussion, I would, having been on the other side of this, I was doing the advocacy work in, in working through two years of LE 2003, and thank the city staff for their work, I'm excited to see something that's theoretical that I advise, to be able to see it in the place where I live, and when the time is right, I would love to make the motion to accept the changes as written, as presented.
You're right there.
I've, I've got it, I didn't know if we were ready yet, thank you.
That's fine, absolutely.
If it's time, I move to approve the proposed amendments to chapter 56, Unified Development Ordinance, article four, shoreline zoning, article eight, performance standards, article 11, parking standards, and article 14 definitions.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just want to reiterate what Nancy said, we, we had one group meeting with the planning board and us to talk about all the ins and outs of LE 2003, and it seemed like an incredible amount of work and things to understand and boring details, so I appreciate all the effort that was put in for that, so thank you.
No problem.
It's probably like spreadsheets, but not word to, to you.
It's a lot.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you.
Thanks, ma'am.
Thanks, ma'am. Okay. Number, item 13, discussion in action on council order 112001, request of the highway foreman to award a bid for the Red Bridge Road culvert replacement.
Good evening, counsel. I'm here tonight requesting the council approve a contract with RF Jordan, the material that you should have in your packets, this needs to be done as soon as we can, only because the contractor does need to order the pipe arch, which has quite a bit of a lead time on it, and we have an in-stream work window set by the DEP from the 15th of July through the 1st of October. The city was originally, started looking at this in 2014, and they have explored all the options of rehabilitating it, and the only one that's really any good is to replace it.
I actually forgot to, but I meant to bring out last year's budget book to see, was this a line item in the local roads capital improvement?
So for the last two years, it's been identified in the local roads that we've set money aside, and we also have a DEP grant of $125,000.
And we have enough money in what, what we had approved unless, oh, okay.
We have $725,000 right now between the local road budget from FY23 and what we budgeted in FY24. So, the request is going to be to budget the remaining 344 in FY25 to complete the project, but we're, Adam and I have been working with Jana and Woodard and Curran as well, to try to look at potentially securing some alternative funding, but we need to award the bid so that they can get the, what they need ordered, and we can get on the work schedule, because they have such a tight window of opportunity to get that done.
So if we award the bid today, we're not necessarily saying this is where all the money comes from, we're just awarding the bid?
Well, no, that, it would identify it to be funded out of local roads. Well, no, that, it would identify it to be funded out of local roads.
I see. And then you'll just have to figure out?
And then if we're able to find alternative funding sources via, we're working with the fish organizations like Trouts Unlimited and, because it is a fish passage issue, if we're able to secure other funding, then when we prepare, prepare our FY '25 budget, that number, that 344 number will be less, whatever additional funds we're able to secure.
When the motion's made, though, if, if we could say the, the dollar amount from the stream grant, the dollar amount from this year's budget, and then the dollar amount that we will, we're going to promise to budget from '25? Because if not, we, we could literally be overdrawing the account, and we definitely don't want to do that.
And dollar amount that we need to encumber from FY '23.
Exactly.
I have a question. Again, background as I get up to speed. Was this, what caused the need for the replacement? Is it over time? Was there a single incident? You said since 2014, it's been identified as a problem?
So, yeah, so the city identified it back in 2014, and they hired Andrew McCulloch then to look at what we could do. I mean, culverts only have such a long lifespan, you know? And the reason why this has been pushed off is because it is such a huge undertaking. You know, it's, it's, it's very expensive, but it's to a point where we must do this. There's really, there's no other viable option to replace this.
And I'm just looking for the background. So it was just the age?
It is, absolutely.
Yeah, the culvert, so the culvert is, the bottom is basically entirely gone, the culvert, so.
And then the second question, if I may, and it, it ties back, I think, to the, alluding to other funding. Is this being sized to meet the reality now of more extreme weather events and perhaps larger than it currently is or where it was before it started to rust and maybe?
Yes. Yep, no, absolutely. It's actually a bank full width times 3.2.5, I believe, which is the DEP standard.
Okay. Like I said, that may, I, that may help with some funding when you're looking to upsize due to things that are happening with more extreme weather events. I'm glad to hear that.
I'll just add a little to the background there on the side of fish passage. So back in 2014, when it was identified, the Nature Conservancy had just finished doing their mapping of stream crossings where there are actual viable fish populations. And the, the Red Bridge Road, Branch Lake Stream was identified, which is why that stream crossing grant, we were eligible for that, because you have to show that there is some sort of viable fish population there. In 2014, we have a map of the ones that meet the criteria for viable fish populations. And we, I believe this is the third time that we've actually applied for a stream crossing grant, and we have been successful every single time. The difference here is that in the ones that we've replaced in the past, they are small, much smaller projects in comparison to this.
This is a big one.
Which has been, made this kind of kick down the road, so.
Adam, correct me if I'm wrong, but the DOT has already put, placed a weight limit on the road, right?
Yes, they have.
And if this project isn't completed, they're going to reduce that even further to, which will essentially...
You can walk over it.
Will, it'll essentially stop any commercial vehicles from traveling over. Which probably you're okay with, John.
Was Andrew able to identify why this came in way over budget? I mean, is it cost of materials? Is it?
It's the cost of materials and the cost of labor. We only had, you know, we had two bidders, R.F. Jordan and Main Earth.
Is the culvert one of those bottomless culverts that are designed for fish?
It is. It's, it's concrete embankments on either side, and then there's a metal arch that goes over from side to side.
And that helps us be eligible for those grants for fish?
I would point out as well, one of the bills that was carried over in the legislature was a bond issue for funding for culverts. So there, this is a statewide issue. They know they need the resources, and there may be an opportunity to support that kind of investment that then goes out to the communities.
Like a motion, or? I'm sure we'll give it a shot here.
It's like, I don't know if I'll get the numbers right. I'll suck at Tammy's.
Do you want to speak on this?
Sorry. Sure. It is in a public hearing, but go ahead. Sure.
My name is John Delio. I've lived in Ellsworth for a little over 47 years. I lived on Red Bridge Road for a little over 43 years. I live approximately half a mile north of Red Bridge, Red Culvert. It's not really a bridge. And then in looking at the council packet for all the information on this today, I have a copy of the memo that Adam sent about DOT instructing the city to post it back in '21 for a weight limit of 22 tons. And I know the city did post it, and at either end of Red Bridge, Christian Ridge, and Bangor Road, the signs they posted at each end says, "Bridge Posted Ahead", and it gives the mileage to where the bridge is. 2.8 miles on the, at Christian Ridge, and I think 2.2 coming in Bangor Road. But it doesn't mention anything about what the weight limit is until you actually get to the bridge itself. And on either end of the bridge, right where the guardrails start, it says, "Weight Limit 22 Tons". So when those signs went up, I thought, you know, if you're trying to keep heavy trucks off that road, it would make sense that you tell them what the weight limit is when they turn on the road. So I contacted, went through the city portal, fix it through the highway department. It was when Lisa was still here. Her basic response was, well, DOT told us to put those signs up. We have no plans on enforcing the weight limit. So it's like, you know, and if it goes back to 2014, I didn't realize it went back that far. I mean, if DOT, a bridge inspector, whoever inspected, is saying, this bridge is really bad, you know, shouldn't the city, until it gets fixed, be more cognizant of overweight trucks going over that bridge? And I can guarantee you that, I've lived there, there's logging trucks coming up that road all the time, including tractor trailers. And I would guess, out of my, would have more information, more knowledge on that, but you're talking about an 80, 90,000 pound of weight on tractor trail of logging trucks. So that's one concern I had, you know, if, should a sign be put, the weight limit at either end of the road to try and keep those heavy trucks off? The other, the other point I wanted to make is, is in the, in the bid package, it says that in-stream work is only allowed from July 15th to September 30th of 2024, and the road can be closed for a maximum of 45 days. And I just wonder, this is more directed towards the chief, is, is Red Bridge Road, if some of you are not aware of it, is, is basically a bypass for Route 1A. Especially when something happens on Route 1A from Red Bridge to Christian Ridge, or even further to North Street Union or Bridges, it's times that, that due to a crash or some other incident, 1A gets totally shut down. And so obviously, then all traffic comes down Red Bridge. So during next summer, at the height of tourist season, you're going to have Red Bridge totally shut down, possibly for 45 days. So I'm just asking, I know it's still a ways away, but some thought should be given to, if you shut down 1A for, for a big crash, what happens to traffic in Ellsworth? You know, if, if you thought traffic was bad, you know, in a day-to-day process, you know, what happens when something like that happens? Obviously, like I say, that's up to Glenn to figure out. But, you know, if, if until it's fixed, if DOT says there only should be something, no, no more than 44,000 pounds going over that, you know, should the city do something about actually enforcing that? Thank you.
Thank you.
As far as if the road gets shut down, you know, it would be an inconvenience for everybody, but they could go all the way through Happy Down, up through Wink and Bar. You know, it's not ideal, but that's part of the reason why it's so important to replace this culvert.
As far as the signs, so that people don't realize?
We can order a couple of signs.
I can assure you, I never had that conversation about enforcement, so. It never gave any instruction that we wouldn't enforce it. So certainly, if, if we've been told that the road, you know, that there's integrity issues with that road and that they're recommending a weight limit, then we would absolutely enforce it, and we can change those signs to, to reflect that, for sure.
Anyone else need to speak, ask a question?
Okay.
There you go, Tilly.
All right. Move to award the bid to R.F. Jordan for $951,342, and a contract for construction oversight to Andrew McCulloch, PE, in the amount of $23,250 with a 10% contingency for a total project amount of $1,069,762.20, to be funded, $600,000 from local roads capital improvement account, $125,000 for the DEP steam, stream grant from the state of Maine, and $344,762.20 from, encumbered from local roads for next year. Not encumbered, but for future budgeted amounts.
Are we encumbering from 2020? What are you on now? 24, 2023? We have what?
Yes. There's $300,000 that was funded in local roads for FY '23 that we'll need to encumber, and then $300,000 is in the current fiscal year's budget.
So $300,000 from 2023, encumbered local roads funds. You going to get all that?
And then 300 from 24.
300 from 24, yep.
Second.
So, question for clarification. Is there enough flexibility in there with the encumbrance language that allows us to accept other funding that may come from other sources? So, we have that flexibility still?
Yes. Pretty much what we're saying is that nothing else, this amount of money has to come, we have to.
No more of the, or?
Yeah. We could say future funding.
Future local roads funding.
Or grants, or?
Are we clear on the question and second?
Do I have to repeat it?
Do you dare you?
You're good.
Any additional discussion? Council?
Adam, you said that this was looked at and determined and needed some repair in 2014, which is pushing 10 years ago. This is a million bucks. Is there, is there anywhere in the city road system or the city, your department, that should be higher on priority than this? Or is this high priority in your eyes? In my eyes, it's a very high priority, because as John pointed out, when there's an accident on 1A, this is the bypass. It is pretty, pretty important. So if you had your choice, this is the most important? For the immediate needs, yes. Yes, okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Thank you, Adam.
Thank you, Adam. Okay. Item number 14, Discussion and Potential Action on Council Order Number 112002 to Accept $32,000 from the Community Resilience Partnership Grant Program. There is no required matching funds associated with this grant award, and the scope of the grant is to fund an evaluation of Ellsworth pedestrian and bicycle transportation resources within the downtown area.
Hello again. So back in February, the council adopted a resolution and had an agenda item on joining the state's Community Resilience Partnership, which is a state program that helps look at, you know, climate resilience throughout the state and helps municipalities fund programs to improve their situation in that regard. After that vote in February, we were, turned in our staff, turned in an application to join this Community Resilience Partnership, received confirmation in May. Then we began working on our grant application. And we had been in prior discussions with DOT for the Village Partnership Initiative Grant, which is also, the council's also had a presentation on in the past. And this seemed like a good matching fund opportunity for our project within that scope, which we'll be discussing the next agenda item. So we did, we filled out our grant application. In September, we found out that our grant was awarded for $32,000 to perform this study. And so, yeah, we come before you now to ask that the council request to accept the $32,000 to be used for the evaluation of bike bed infrastructure, particularly within our downtown and residential areas.
Any questions?
What does the timeline look like if we approve this for the completion of the report?
So previously, when talking to DOT, the planning process would start, the plan would take over, over the course of the next year. It has to be done by next October, roughly. So the plan would start relatively soon, but discussion with DOT, we'd have to talk to them about specifically what the timeline looks like for the plan.
Again, this is not a public hearing. Does anyone in the public like to have a question?
I just want to offer, since this is in the downtown area, that Heart of Ellsworth is of service in any way, shape, or form that we can to help anything cross this along.
Thank you.
Happy to help.
EPI Agenda Item Materials, it discusses a working group with community partners that are related to the downtown, so.
Ready for a motion?
Aye. I move that we authorize the city manager to execute the necessary agreement to accept a $32,000 grant from the Climate Resilience Partnership Community Action Grant Program for a study to evaluate Ellsworth's pedestrian and bicycle transportation resources within the downtown area.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Thanks, Matt. It's exciting.
Yeah.
Matt's staying where he is, right?
What's next?
All right. Item number 15, Discussion and Potential Action on Council Order 112003 on Applying for the Main DOT's Village Partnership Initiative Planning Phase for a Planning Study Evaluating Bicycle and Pedestrian Infrastructure in Streetscape Design in the City's Downtown Area, with a 50% local match allocated from the Community Resilience Partnership Grant, funding up to $10,000 from the FY '24 Local Roads Fund, and funding up to $15,000 from FY '24 TIF funds.
Yep, so discuss, so the Village Partnership Initiative Planning Phase is a product of, been having a lot of discussions with the main DOT about performing in Ellsworth's downtown area. And we're now asking for allocation of funds for this project. So the DOT estimated that the total cost of the plan would be around $108,000. And so with using the Community Resiliency Partnership Grant, just accounting for potential increases in costs for the study, staff is asking for, again, the allocation of funds as described. Our 50% match would be the $32,000 from the Community Resilience Partnership, $10,000 from local roads, then up to $10,000, I should say, from local roads, then up to $15,000 from TIF funds, if necessary. And the scope of that work is included in your packet. And it kind of goes through the deliverables and tasks associated with it. Any questions?
Any questions, Matt?
Describe it a little bit for the public.
Sure. So we're really looking at a study area that starts up 1A by the high school, or State Street, I should say, by the high school, where it intersects with 1A, and then coming down to Main Street and Water Street, and then some of the residential roads off of Main Street, you know, Hancock, Franklin, those areas. And looking really at the potential for parking needs assessments, changes to increase parking efficiency, wayfinding issues for the study area, traffic movement studies for that area, see how, where traffic is headed, road dieting, beautification, and then also how to increase pedestrian circulation. road dieting, beautification, and then also how to increase pedestrian circulation or bike ped circulation, I should say. So increasing sidewalk potential, for new sidewalk construction, maybe bike lanes, just depends how much right of way we have. And looking at signaling issues for the upper and lower light on Main Street.
Any questions? Motion?
Yeah, there's a suggested motion at the bottom of the memo. In bold letter.
Move to approve of the dismissal of a main D O T Village Partnership Initiative Planning Phase Application with required matching funds allocated from up to thirty-two thousand of the Community Resilience Partnership Grant funds, up to ten thousand from F Y twenty-four local roads funds, and up to fifteen thousand from F Y twenty-four T I F funds.
Second. Discussion? I do have just one question, the money, the amount of money you have coming from the local roads from the budget? I know I spent months on it, but was this included in there?
Yes.
It was, okay, thank you.
Which, oh, I'm not familiar with our T I F funds, how many?
That's another meeting.
Can you teach us about T I F funds?
No, I'm just wondering, how many T I Fs? Do we have three T I Fs, okay, which?
Well, this is, so we have an economic development T I F, so these funds come from the economic development T I F. There's, I have a T I F map, I can show you where the districts are located within the city. And so the funding that comes in for that, we have a T I F plan that is, complies with state standards. And so you can utilize T I F funds for certain activities. And downtown improvements and just pedestrian bike projects in general fall under two of those actions that we can utilize T I F funds for. Is that good?
Oh, yeah, no, actually, I've written T I Fs and done all that, but I was wondering, so we have three T I F?
Well, we have, we have the economic development T I F, we have housing T I Fs.
And workforce housing?
Workforce housing, yeah, senior housing, and then workforce housing.
Okay, well, I'll have more questions later, I won't ask them now, but just to learn more about those.
Not at all, yeah.
We have a T I F plan that we could send out.
Absolutely.
That'd be great, yeah.
Further discussion? All those in favor? Declined? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Item number sixteen, discussion and action on council order one-one-two-zero-zero-four to take over the care and maintenance of Juniper Ridge Cemetery at the request of the heirs of former association members.
Good evening, I'm the finance director, Ann Lane, and I have a little handout for this. This is exactly the per view of the finance director, so I brought a smart person who is the sexton of the Woodbine Cemetery. If you may know him, Mark Blanchett. So, again, I'm not even going to pretend to be an expert on cemeteries, but this lady who was the last surviving member of the Association for Juniper Cemetery walked into my office this summer, and she was desperate to find someone to take over the care of this cemetery. And the city has held the reserve for a while, and she essentially handed over the checkbook and walked out the door like France. So, one of my deputies kind of took over the legwork on this project. She went out and looked at the cemetery to see what kind of condition it was in. She met with Mark Blanchett to kind of find out, what do you do in this situation? We spoke to an attorney with M M A about what the, what they would need to do to basically hand over this, or allow the city to do anything to help them. So they had a sort of ad hoc committee of people meet to be the association and dissolve the association. And that was where they left it in August. So, there's some basic information about the cemetery there. Like I said, we do hold the reserve, which is about thirty thousand, little over. We have an operating account that's held at T D, we use that to pay for mowing and maintenance. As you can see, there are forty-one veteran graves there, so by law, the city is obligated to maintain those.
Are those the blue boxes on the map?
Yes.
And that is the state's record of veterans, so that's essentially what we have to answer to, is the care of those particular graves. So they're not located in any one section, as you can see, they're throughout the cemetery. So we have had some discussions, some minimal discussions about this in finance committee because, as I said, this is not normally something that would come through finance. I just happened to be in the right place at the right time when this lady came through. So I'm trying to, to help them out. And so I think, Mark, if you'll come up here, part of what we talked about is trying to form a new association because there, it's still an active cemetery, there's still people who own plots who plan to bury people. I've had two or three inquiries just in the time that I've been here and been involved with this, which is just a few months. So it seems important that, that we should try to, to help these people kind of put this back together, form an association. There's enough people, Mark knows better than I, I don't live in Ellsworth, so I'm not entirely sure, that we can put together an association to take over this responsibility. And that's what I'm looking for permission from city council to try to do that, try to form a new association. Mark's agreed to be the interim sexton till we find one and carry on the normal operations of the cemetery that we're required to do, just, you know, because it's the right thing to do.
I was gonna say, as human beings, yeah.
Yeah, so that's pretty much all I know about it.
Mark, you want to add anything?
There isn't much I could add, other than I would hate to see the cemetery go inactive. There's a lot of families that currently own lots there. Some have recently purchased them, some have had them for decades and decades. And to have to tell these people no that you can no longer make use of them, I think would be a mistake. So I'm willing to, to help the city through this, I know you're in a tough spot. And it's, it's the same thing that I do at, at Woodbine. So taking this on would be no, you know, nothing worth shattering by any means. But if it would help the city and if it would help the, the families and current owners until a new committee can be formed, then I'd be happy to do that.
I'm a little, so I guess I'm, so what is the request of the city to take over the ownership of the cemetery?
It's not so much the ownership as it's, at this point, just the management, the property's deeded to the cemetery. It's a little bit unclear, I've had a couple of interesting experiences with trying to figure out deeds in Ellsworth. But basically, what we want to try to do is just to form a new association and kind of send them on their way with the rest of the cemeteries. It's already in the city's budget to fund the cemetery, it's among all the cemeteries that we fund. So rather than just letting it, you know, close down and, I mean, I just feel like it would be not the right thing to do. I think that, you know, we've held a reserve fund for the cemetery for some time, so there's no reason to do that. We should try to keep it open, keep it functioning, make good on, you know, with the families that, that already own lots there.
Yeah, so the city does this for other cemeteries, what you're requesting?
What we do is we provide funds for perpetual endowment to other cemetery, all the cemeteries.
It's for the veterans, so it's for, to take care of the maintenance for just the veteran sections, and that's required by law for us to do that.
Is that what we're doing for, we're not?
We're not paying for, like, this would mean that we'd be taking over all of the mowing and we'd pay for the whole thing. What would happen is they would send us a bill and, like, whatever percentage of the veterans were in that cemetery, they would charge us for that amount and we'd have to pay it, that's what's budgeted right now.
So the request here is beyond that, is to take over the entire cemetery? Do we do that for any other cemeteries in Ellsworth?
No active cemeteries. We, we do, there are other cemeteries that we maintain entirely, because there's no longer an association or anyone. But they're, they're not active, so there's not any active burials taking place in those, that would be the difference here. But unfortunately, as, as has been stated, there is currently, there's no, so if somebody owns a plot or somebody would like to bury a loved one in that cemetery, there's no one to go to right now. There's no association, there's nobody who has the information, the capacity to do anything for those people. So that's essentially what the city is asking to do, is to take over that role somewhat on a temporary basis, potentially, because the goal is going to be to stand up a new association. Hope, we're hopeful that that can happen, that may never happen, and at some point, it'll come back to the council to make a determination, you know, long-term, what you want to do with the cemetery, whether you want to continue to essentially operate the cemetery or potentially look at closing it off to, you know, any selling new plots and that sort of thing for the future, but.
So if we said no to this request, then does the cemetery automatically become inactive? And if you own a plot, like, there's nothing you can do with it? Is that like an automatic thing?
In that sense, so we actually have thirty days from the date of their request. Well, from the date that it's filed with the clerk, the council has thirty days to act on it. I date stamped their request November second, so you have thirty days from November second to act on their request. And our attorney had emailed me early in November with his recommendation, since we wanted to establish a new association. So under thirteen M R S A subsection twelve twenty-one, a cemetery group may vote to transfer the cemetery, but there must be a written agreement of all the owners. That agreement gets filed with the clerk, which I've done as of November second. The council has thirty days to act, and then once the council makes a decision, fewer to vote to take it over today, I have to file their minutes of voting to get rid of it, and your vote to take it at the registry of deeds, and that creates the deed and the ownership in the city's name. And then as we find an association and create a group of people, we would then do the same process and give it over. We would make a new deed transfer over.
So you have already, so everybody who owns a plot, you've already communicated with? Because those are the people who had to agree to move it to us, or no, you're talking about that one lady who walked?
The one lady that walked into Ann's office.
Yeah, okay, so has there been, I get, I'm only asking, and I don't want this to go fallow, but has there been any communication with the people who own a plot to say, hey, if you guys don't form an association, you might lose this thing?
There hasn't, the clerk's office maintains a very, very bland list of cemeteries and their contact information. And we had three or four people on our list for Juniper Ridge. Last year, we started to get numerous calls that the grass was knee-high and it was unkempt, and then we were getting calls, someone wanted to bury their grandfather, and it, that's when it really became a big issue. We're getting calls repeatedly last year, which kind of created where we're at now, was we've got to figure out how to, how to take care of it at this point.
What did you do, what did you do with those calls?
We sent them to Glenn.
Did you go bury someone's grave?
Last, so a year ago, not this past summer, but the year before, we did reach out to this Ms. White.
Mary White.
And there was, there was one or two others that she put us in contact with, but they were all in the same situation. They're elderly, their health was failing, and none of them had the capacity to stand, to keep it going.
And the few that were younger, whose their parents or grandparents were on it, they had no desire to step up and, and deal with it themselves. So we just, we're hitting a brick wall, nobody, nobody knows what to do, nor have the time or the capacity to either start to serve in lieu of their family or continue to serve because of their own issues.
Yeah, it seems like if we take it, it just seems hard for me to believe that if we take it on, it's going to be temporary, because if you couldn't find anybody in the last year, once we own it, no one's going to be like, hey, I know what I want to do in my free time.
The struggle, though, in the last year is we really couldn't actively look for a committee because it's not ours to staff. So I think if we were to own it, we could, you know, more is great with getting those things up to the public and trying to solicit people to come and want to be part of that. So we haven't actively tried in a large reach. We've just tried by contacting those that we know might have an interest in that. We may have better luck, once it's, if we were to take it officially.
Casey? Woodbine has a very active board, with people that are very interested in it. It's my educated guess that Juniper can have the very same thing. I think people just aren't aware of it.
They don't know that yet.
The only time you deal with a cemetery, to be honest, is when there's a death and, and there's a burial that needs to take place. Other than that, you know, the, the people that have interest in that cemetery, I'm sure don't know anything about this, or know very little about it. So I, I don't think it would be an issue to get a board together in, in a short time.
I'd make a suggestion and actually volunteer to help make it happen. As I'm looking at the, the blue squares, there are, whether it's V F W, American Legion, or others that care for veterans, as well as, now that apparently I'm on the Historic Preservation Commission, I'm a member of the Historical Society, I think that there are, to Mark's point, there are people who care about these kinds of things, whether it's just the veterans who are buried here or more broadly, this is, this is Ellsworth's history, I'm, it's extraordinary. I mean, the legend even shows veterans from World War, as though there were only one back when, when that.
There's Civil War. A lot of them are Civil War.
Yeah, well, I know what I'm saying, the Spanish War, Revolutionary War, I mean, this is extraordinary. So I would like to see us resolve it tonight and take, do whatever we need to do, because this is our only meeting before December second, and then I'm willing to work. Those are the groups that come to mind for me, if the families, it hasn't worked, then let's get a group together. So in the discussion phase before this emotion, if we can look at a motion, that would be, we do what we need to do to take possession, if that's the right language, with the goal of, is it six months or it's twelve months? That we have an association that we can transfer ownership to in the future. But, but I agree, it's, it's the right thing to do, it's the decent thing to do, we can't lose this, and this is our one chance to do that. And I'm willing to reach out and, and do what I can to help form and maybe work with Mark on forming, inviting people to come to an association. I have ideas but no direct experience with this, and it sounds like you do. So maybe we can work together to put together ideas for an association over the next six months, twelve months.
If we were to take this over, I would like to recommend some sort of stipend for Mr. Blanchett for his services as the interim sexton, so.
I, I agree with that, I mean, you, you can't, it's very nice of you to volunteer for something like that, but it's, it's a job and, you know, it's a responsibility. My, my other piece is, is, and it is the right thing to do for the people that have plots, but there's still several acres, from my understanding, that can be. plots, but there's still several acres, from my understanding, that can be sold. And does the city want to get into the business of selling plots, or to hold that until a new association has been formed?
I don't think you want to start selling any plots. That's, that's probably one of the easier parts of being a sexton, is meeting, you know, an individual or a family up there, and having them select a plot. I mean, after all, that's part of your, the monies that can be used for maintenance, for mowing and/or stone repair, if that was needed.
And I agree with that. The thing is, is that if we don't find an association, we've now just made a larger cemetery that the city has to take care of. And the money will run out. I mean, we don't have perpetual care funds. And then we still need to decide, if we did that, then we would need to know, decide how to sell them, how much to sell them for. And there's, there's a lot that would go into that, and hopefully it also may encourage an association to come in and make those decisions. If we just say, you know, we will take care of what's there, we will, you know, allow people that have their plots, we have a sexton that will take care of helping you do that. But at least temporarily stop until, there are a lot of decisions that need to be made upon that piece, and not something that the city staff is equipped to take over and take care of.
The, the city staff wouldn't, wouldn't necessarily be taking, you're talking as far as sales?
Yes.
That's, I'll, the easiest thing to do is what the previous sexton at Woodbine, Bill Clark, did. Put a sign up near the entrance. You know, if there's any questions, or if, if you need any help with anything, you put the name and the phone number. And I get a lot of phone calls on, on Woodbine. And it's no, it really is no great shakes to meet people there, whether it's Woodbine or whether it's Juniper. You know, to answer their question. If, if they're just looking for grandpa, you know, where's he buried? Well, we have the map.
That I understand, and that, that's, I'll just one second. Counselor Allen?
Could you maybe explain the process that was in place fifteen years ago? How would somebody have bought a plot from this association fifteen years ago? Could you lay that out for us?
From Juniper?
I'm sorry?
From Juniper?
Yeah.
I have no idea. I, I wasn't involved with Juniper.
Okay. How about the one you are involved with? How would, what, how does that work today?
Woodbine? You, you buy a right to burial. Supreme Court about twenty years ago said you cannot sell a plot in a, in a cemetery, because that, that says that you have ownership. You can't have ownership of a plot. You have a right to burial. Cemetery retains the ownership of all the plots.
Backing up a little bit. So someone wants to bury their loved one in Woodbine?
Yeah.
They don't call the City of Ellsworth, they call an association?
They call me.
Sexton.
Okay.
Of an association, because it's not a city.
Right, right. And so how, does the city direct them to that, or, or is it just known, there's a sign out there, like you said?
The, the city has directed people to me. Word of mouth and the sign, I suppose.
So this one we're discussing tonight, no one here knows how that once worked, the last sexton that was there, or anything like that?
I have all the records.
We have the records.
Yeah. We have extensive records and very detailed maps with names.
One of the problems that will occur, if, if Juniper is allowed to, shall we say, wither on the vine, there will still be burials taking place there. You know, families are going to say, I own a plot, I'm going to take, and I'm going to use it. Doesn't matter whether it's open or not. When that happens, there will be no records kept. If their plot is from here to here, they're going to guesstimate, well, we'll dig the hole over here. You're going to start hitting caskets or burial vaults on either side of it. You're going to be infringing on somebody else's plot. It's imperative that records be kept of, of who's, of who was buried, where and when.
What would you like to do?
I would like Nancy to make that motion she was talking about.
Trying to form it all while immediately doing research on cemeteries in Ellsworth. If we can crowdsource a motion, which I think is what we're doing here, and make a motion that we, that the City of Ellsworth accept ownership of Juniper Cemetery.
Temporarily.
With the intention of, of within six, within twelve months, transferring that to a newly formed association that would carry on the role of.
Administration.
Administration, thank you, for the cemetery. Period.
And?
And then, is there a second sentence? Then what else?
Hire Mark Blanchett.
So, wait, Mark Blanchett as sexton for, with a stipend? I don't know how you determine what that is.
What stipend do you get for the other, for the work that you do in the other?
I'm sorry?
What stipend do you get for the work that you do in Woodbine, so we can match it?
We can double that.
How about to be determined for negotiations between the city man, with the city manager?
Not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars.
Is that sufficient? And then on my, I don't know what to do with the rest of it. I'm, I'm willing to kind of work with others and try to find an association, build an association in that time.
Second, I don't think your second part has to go in the motion, but I second your motion.
Okay.
Discussion?
At the Comprehensive Plan Subcommittee on Historic Preservation, there were a couple of folks that brought up cemeteries and wanted to know, and asking me to request the finance director as well, have those funds worked. And there was some interest from Historic Preservation.
I would love their names and contact info, and will get real. I do, I think, between veterans historical, historic, and people who love Ellsworth, there may, there's got to be enough people that, that care enough to keep this from becoming something that is lost.
I couldn't tell if you were scratching your head.
No, well, I did both. So I'm a little confused about the pick. Could we maybe zero in on that a little bit? I, you mentioned like, up to fifteen thousand.
No, I was, that was a joke.
I understand, I understand, but the records may not know that was a joke. So that was my only concern. I mean, I agree that we can't let this go by the wayside. I mean, I'm sure other towns have had to go through this process. Do you know of that?
Yeah. Ask Blue Hill what happened to them a year ago.
Could you tell us?
Sexton went on, went to Florida in the winter, apparently, as he always does. And in his absence last fall, I believe, or early spring, I think it was last fall, a burial took place. Right church, wrong pew. You know, yeah, they owned a lot in the cemetery, but person was buried in the wrong lot. Someone else's lot. So it's easy to do.
And the town just had to dig them up and move them to direct the loss.
That it. More pain for the loved ones, right? I mean, that's what I heard again.
Burying somebody's loved one.
Yeah, I think everything that's been said makes sense to me, but my lawyer brain, I was looking at the statutes, and there's some potential liability to a municipality if they don't properly maintain a cemetery. It's under their control and things of that nature. I think the, we should do everything we can to get an association together, so this isn't the city's ownership of a, and I think if we don't have an association in a year, we need to figure out what's, you know, do we really want it? Is the city going to own the cemetery in perpetuity? Because we, we don't own any other cemeteries, as far as lawyers are concerned.
Not active ones.
Not active ones, okay. Does that mean, does that mean we need to foreclose it? Because I don't think, I'm concerned about.
Hey Pat, can you turn up your volume a little bit, please?
Sure. I just.
No, I'm, I'm in your personal volume.
Yeah. Oh, sure. I just have concerns about the, the city maintaining a cemetery, an active cemetery. So I think in a year, if we can't find an association, one consideration would have to be to just, you know, are we, if, if no one else is going to take this on, do we need to, you know, I guess, foreclose on the cemetery and no longer have it be active or something? Because I, again, I think it's, I'm all for helping the cemetery organization and finding a new, you know, board of trustees and organization, but I think we just need to be careful that getting into the cemetery business, for lack of a better term, there's some risk there, I see.
And I think having that out there prompts the conversations and some decisions to be made in the next year. Tammy, you had your hand up?
I did, just to make Counselor Halloran more comfortable, maybe part of the motion, have the city manager bring back to the finance committee, you know, what, what the agreement was between.
Yeah.
Finance committee can't make decisions.
No, but he can update us on that, so.
If I could, could I add a friendly amendment?
Let me hear it.
I, I would just like to amend the, your, yeah, I would. I'm talking and thinking at the same time. I'm trying to think out of what this, so, yeah, so I'd like to amend your motion to include that there would be no new sales of lots in that year, until an association is created.
I'm, I'm hesitant to do that. I think Mark made good points about there's revenue coming in. Again, thinking about families who, if, if we're talking about grandma and grandpa, grandpa's buried there.
And grandma dies.
And grandma dies, or other, I mean, we have to go through this buying a family plot. How many family members do you want to be able to bury? It's, it's gut-wrenching. If, if, if it's the role of the sexton to, to sell cemetery plots in addition to the other maintenance, then it, then it's appropriate, and maybe if that process, I don't know if we have, if it matches Woodbine, like what their fees are. So I'm not, I guess I'm not, I'm more concerned about, it, it's good to have revenue coming in, but it's also good to be able to accommodate people who want to be buried there. And I'm not clear on what the downside would be of continuing sales in that year.
The biggest downside would be is, is what happens in a year if we can't get an association together. So now we're, we're going to have even more plots that are being ready for burial. And the other piece of this is, if, if, if it is, if you would not like to add the amendment, then I would ask that we have something come back to the council with a plan for how we're going to sell them, how much we're going to sell them for, and, and actually a plan of how many lots we think that we could, or plots we think that we could have. I just want it to be, and my, because I sent this to Mark, and I don't want anything to happen to Mark, but he's a sexton, and he's about the only one in town now, honestly. And so if anything happened to him, and if he wants to go to Florida, in, you know, for the winter, what do we do? We have, I mean, it's bad enough that we're going to have people that have plots, but now we're going to have people that want to buy them. And we don't have a way of saying no. It's such a temporary thing.
Can I propose it be something like, either there's a disclaimer for plots that are sold in this time period, that would come up with a language, but that, you know, it's uncertain how long the city's going to maintain it, or you do something like plots can be sold if they are to be used in the next twelve months. Because I, I see your point about you're creating an expectation that we don't plan to fulfill.
Exactly. And I, I mean, I could ask Counselor Lyons about that, but the liability of, of doing that, and I don't think you really can put a disclaimer, because this is where we get into this, is that city staff, if, if Mark isn't around, and they, it belongs to us.
Yeah.
City staff is going to be responsible for coming up with those answers and selling them, or, you know, anything like that. And again, we're just not, we're not in the business of selling plots, and we're going to have people that don't know about the disclaimer, or, you know, don't have the accurate information. You know, there are just so many, if you have a board, and that's what they are really focused on, I can see selling the plots. But when you've got a, a city, and you've got staff, and you've got one sexton who's going to have one hundred percent of the responsibility for doing this, because none of, I mean, who else is going to do it? I just think we're, if, if our intention is to have an association, then we should just do what we have to do to maintain, absolutely, to allow the people to be buried, but not make this a bigger, I don't want to say issue, but issue, by adding on to the size of the cemetery and the responsibility of the cemetery that we don't even plan on keeping.
Michelle, you have four active inquiries right now.
To buy?
On burials.
To buy or to bury where they already own?
Yeah, well, burials and, and the purchase.
They're out-ons for families. They want to buy more plots.
And as, as a, as a sexton, I would hate to have to tell people, hey, my hands are tied, you got to wait another twelve months. And we're going into winter. I've never sold a plot in the wintertime. You know, it's, it's roughly a, a eight-month-a-year, seven-month-a-year business, so to speak. It, it isn't as difficult as, as what I believe you're thinking it is. It's pretty easy and straightforward. If they want to buy a plot, you know, row C, grave twelve, make a check out the City of Ellsworth. I give them a, a right to burial sale, and enter it in the, in the records. And at some point, the funeral home or family, nowadays, a lot of families will do a burial, because it's just a cremation urn. And so funeral homes of families will call and say, you know, grandpa died, he has a, a lot up at Juniper, can you tell me which one it is? I go out, I flag out the four corners of it. And the, the funeral home will either send their excavator out, or sometimes the family will come in with a, with a shovel or two and, and do it themselves.
And I understand that, and I'm, I'm going to give up in a second. But can't be that easy, because Blue Hill had an issue. And then the issue is, is because it's a municipality, and there's one person that knows what's going on. And so, but, no, I mean, but seriously, and so that's, that's my worry, but Counselor Hall.
I just, do we know when the last, when, when this was handed to you?
I'm not saying it has been handed to me.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm talking to the finance director.
Oh.
So when this lady handed you her records, her checkbook, and, and all of this good stuff, was there anything said about there's nine people waiting to go in, there's families that want to buy, or was you, they just gave you the stuff and that was it?
My recollection is, I believe there was some interest, you may recall that Christina actually handled this project with Mary White. But I have the notes that Christina left for me. And I had people that came to City Hall who were kind of in limbo since this has all started, still trying to find out what's going on, what can we do? I had some people come all the way from Washington, and I, I couldn't do anything. It was awful. And they were coming to bury, I think, their grandfather. It was just the urn, I mean, it was a, you know. It was just the urn, I mean, it was the, you know, cremains, as they call them, but, um,
So, so we've done no burials since the day that you got that stuff?
None that we know about. That's the problem, is that people will just go and do it. Yeah, vigilante burials.
Without your action tonight, we have no authority over that cemetery. We can't tell people they can bury you, we can't sell them plots. When we did have people come to the city, we did refer them back to Mary, but she-
But with no Mary, there's no. So it, it seems like what we want to do is limit the scope of our liability and that the two ways of doing that are limiting the time period or limiting what activity happens there. I would hate to have us tell someone that grandma can't be next to grandpa. So, and it sounds like you're comfortable enough sort of taking on the responsibility for that, for this 12-month period. And I think Nancy's motion was specific in its timeline, so we've only agreed to 12 months, or we could even make it shorter and make it six months to, again, to limit our liability and get the word out there into the universe to be like, hey, who out there is gonna take this on? To me, I guess, I think, limiting the time, either to 12 months or six months, makes the most sense, and then let it go on as it is, let people be buried there and buy plots if they need to.
Six, six months won't be enough, Casey. That gets you through to May. Essentially, the cemeteries across the state are closed.
But don't you just need to find humans in that time?
Yeah, but this is to form the association.
Is that-
Right, that's the timeline, to form an association, to take it over.
And that couldn't be done in six months?
I think, I was gonna suggest, in order to address your concern in a way that feels comfortable, I think, to your point, tightening the timeframe, this is to form the association, not anything physically happening at the cemetery. And again, if people, people, human nature, we respond to deadlines. And if, if the word is out six months from now,
Like, that's how much time you have?
We're gonna be having a very uncomfortable conversation, so those of you who are interested, we have six months to put together an association, and I'm willing to do the work to prompt that.
Thanks, Counselor Moynihan.
So I'm comfortable accepting us taking the cemetery, but I would like to see next month them come back with a plan, because we don't know how much we're signing the lot, the plots for, and just have some sort of plan in place before we decide to start selling. So that, that would be my recommendation, to approve this and then have the, the costs and how it's all gonna be handled. This would also cover the portion with Mr. Blanchett as a sexton and what type of stipend we're gonna provide to him. That's just my suggestion.
So basically, you're suggesting we take it over now, but we don't sell any new plots until this next meeting when we have this, all this information come out?
Yeah.
Yeah, I like that idea. I'm sorry.
Nope, that's okay. It, it raised his hand.
No, no, go ahead.
That's so good.
I just, um, and just on that, I think, I don't know, it sounds like we reached out to Maine Municipal Association about this, but not our,
Originally to the legal, no, to legal, at MMA.
Yeah, but we didn't reach out to our own attorneys to-
Yeah, we did.
I did, I did, just about the actual taking over process and what the expectation was for records.
Okay. I just, I would be more comfortable if we had someone give us, like, what's the liability here to the city and-
And I did not ask our attorney the liability, I just simply asked the process for two things.
Yeah, I think for next month it'd be helpful to have some kind of, and here's, you know, how you proceed. And just, you know, here's what's, here's what to be aware of, and that would help us inform, you know, next month's decision as well.
So we have a, oh, so go ahead.
So, couple of thoughts, questions, if you will. Smaller towns manage their own cemeteries, is that fair to say? Right? I mean, a lot of the small towns, you have to call the town office to get a lot purchased or arrangements or what have you, right?
Yep.
Okay. I would just say this, I, um, I think if we take this over, it's ours. I don't think there's any turning back. And, um, if small towns are doing it, I'm, certainly, I don't like this position. But if small towns are managing it, if we, if we vote tonight to take this over, it's ours, no one in their right mind is gonna form an association and take it back from us.
You might be surprised.
I might be, I hope I am. But, um, I just want to throw that out there, that if small towns are managing their own cemeteries.
Small towns are managing cemeteries much larger than this one. If I had to guess, there's 200, 250 burials up there now. I don't know how big the land, uh, the entire lot is, but I know there's, there's a lot of empty.
But if small, if small towns are managing this, I mean, certainly, it's, you know, the private sector is much better for it, but if we take this over, this is ours, um, no one in their right mind is gonna take this over from us. I don't believe. And I hope I'm wrong. But I, I also don't know-
We're looking for volunteers.
I'm sorry?
We're looking for volunteers to be in the committee.
I also don't know, um, that we have a whole lot of choice to be, um, a community. You know, we're, we're always looking to spend money on certain things that we feel that we need, and I don't know, I, I, I think it's a real disservice if we don't step up to the plate here.
Ellsworth maintains the original burial ground across the street and has for probably damn near 200 years.
Well, yeah, there's no burials there.
I'm sorry?
You mean the one by the church?
Yeah, behind the carnival church.
Yeah. There's no one being buried there anymore. It's pretty easy to maintain.
No, there's not, but we still maintain it.
Yeah. I don't have a problem maintaining. We have to ma, we have to provide money anyways to, for the, for the veterans, I think.
So it sounds like next month we want to see a response from the city's lawyer, just outlining potential liabilities and what we should be on the lookout for. We also want to see a general sort of menu of what's available for people if they want to. You said there were eight parties interested?
Four.
Four. Are they okay, do you think, in your opinion, to wait another month?
I mean, I haven't had authority to talk to them or say anything, so that's gonna be the first thing that I do.
Well, if there's no, I mean, as you said, this time of year, there's no burials, correct? So it sounds like we have a little bit of a period there to figure things out before we need to make that determination.
Okay, before we get further into this, um, we have, I just want to clarify, we have a motion in a second. Do you want to say that one more time, Nancy? I hate to ask you to do that.
I'm hoping somebody did. I bet she wrote it down and we can amend it, I think, for the report back if we need to next month with some details.
Are you ready?
Yes, thank you.
I have a motion to take ownership and that within 12 months, establish a new association, relinquish our ownership to this association, and the interim to hire Mark Blanchett as a sexton with a stipend to be determined in negotiations with the city manager to, um, create a list of fees and have the attorney give us some liability for the December agenda.
Well, yeah, but you added on to that motion. I think it stopped at-
All of this is just my notes. The December agenda, the lawyers for the December agenda.
The actual motion stopped, I think, at-
Yeah, to the second of the one.
The stipend, okay.
And then I, we could, I could make a friendly amendment to add with a report back at the December meeting about cost of plots and also comment about liability from our attorney. And then question mark whether I should add the friendly amendment to change it to six months instead of 12 months.
The, the problem with six months, Casey, like I said, that takes you through to next May. That's when the cemetery would reopen. So if you have somebody call in May, June, July, during the, the summer and early fall, that says, look, um, we need to have a burial take place. Can you send somebody, you know, to tell me where the lot is, flag it out, if you would, please? Well, six months, I'm gonna be gone.
Sure, but I think the idea would be in six months, the association will have formed by then, so you will be able to be gone because the association will have taken over by six months.
And I can tell you from experience, six months into taking over the sexton job at Woodbine, I was still calling Bill Clark. And I was six months into it. Okay, Bill, now this has happened, now that has happened. It, 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 being a sexton is not a, you can't flip a switch and know everything about it. There, there isn't a hell of a lot of difference between six months and 12 months. It's-
If I, if you were to get an association in under 12 months, that would have to come back to the council to then relinquish the ownership, which you would have a right to do within that 12-month period. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so if it's, basically, it's a maximum of 12 months, so if all of a sudden this association appears tomorrow and we want to make it, we could.
They would just come with a request, you would do another vote, I would report it to registry, and then that would, you'd create a big emotion to have Mark still give in from sexton with them to work through that, that phase. So, yeah, I think you could shorten it should it be come.
So fine, I won't make that part as a friendly, so the friendly amendment will only be reporting back next month about cost of plots, for selling plots in, during this interim period, and a report from our attorney about what liability we're taking on by doing this.
And, and just with that liability, also what our responsibilities are, I guess, more, not just liability, like, what is the city's, now what are we doing? Like, what are we required to do and what, if any, is there li, liability for the city?
Do you have a second on the amendment?
Second.
Actually, wait a minute, don't do that. In my head, do you accept that amendment, Nancy?
Yes.
On your motion. Okay, now I need a second.
A second.
Thank you, sorry.
You're doing a good job.
It's like Robert's rules going through my head. Um, discussion on this new motion and amendment?
Question on the way Tony recited the motion. Does it matter, can we say it, it's the intention to form an association in the next 12 months?
I think that's what your motion said.
Yeah. I can't guarantee we're going to, but saying the intention-
The motion to take ownership and with the intention within 12 months to create a new association in the interim to hire Mark Blanchett as sexton with a stipend to be determined through negotiations with Glenn, and in the next 30 days to establish the report on costs of services at the cemetery, as well as a report from our attorney on the liability and responsibility that the city has for taking said cemetery.
One last question, is the word higher appropriate or contract with?
Maybe contract.
Just trying to-
And I hate to keep talking about this, because I'm bored of it, but, um, should it, it says with the intention of 12 months, but should we be clear that we are only agreeing to take this over for 12 months?
I think that's clear, but if you want to make it explicit, but-
I don't think we can do that.
Yeah.
Once we have it, you-
Once we have it, we have it.
Yeah, you're, okay.
Once we have it, we have it.
You know, I'm glad I'm on this side of the table.
Hold it, right?
Fine.
But I think once we have it after 12 months, if we have not been able to find a group-
We'll just have to decide, we're bringing this back, right, yeah.
Okay, so put it on the agenda for next December.
Please, November.
Okay, hold on, Counselor Howard.
I, I don't know if, I mean, you have a motion in a second, and there's been many, um, friendly amendments and twisting and turning here. Could we clear this up? Because I'm really not sure what we're-
Yeah, Tony can read it again.
Twisting.
Read it one more time.
With the amendment, this is what it is.
Okay. The motion is to assume ownership of Juniper Ridge Cemetery.
Juniper, not Juniper Ridge.
Juniper.
We don't want the landfill tonight.
It's being switched that within 12 months, we will form a new association of members of the public that we will give ownership back to them. In the interim, due to contract with Mark Blanchett to be sexton, he shall be paid a stipend that will be determined between him and the city manager. And in your December council meeting, you will receive a report from Mark on the costs of services at the cemetery, as well as a report from the city attorney on all liability the city is assuming by taking this over, as well as our responsibility and what is required of us in taking this over.
You got it. Does everyone agree to this motion in a second?
Just say all in favor.
All right. All in favor? Okay, all decline? Motion carries.
Let's get exercise.
I am tired.
Glenn?
Okay.
You still have tree warden, I get the sexton. No, that's the next agenda item.
All right.
Thank you.
Item 17.
Thanks.
Okay, I will try to go zippy with item 17. I am on the newly formed Arbor Commission, which is a group of incredibly knowledgeable, foresters and urban tree management people. And-
Oh, I got that.
Oh, you do? Okay. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, I just wanted to show-
That's okay. Uh, I sort of think there are three things that we're thinking about on that committee. One is we're trying to figure out how much money we spend on trees in Ellsworth and like, what funds that come from. This is something we're kind of working on. The other one is, as you all might remember, we have a tree ordinance and one of our first desires was to, um, have that committee look at that tree ordinance, which was written, I think, in 1991 or something like that, and update it, and then, of course, that will come back here. And part of that is to think about the tree warden. We have always basically forced the city manager to be the tree warden. But, um, the committee is gonna work, or the commission is gonna work together to, um, provide guidelines, credentials, responsibility duties for future tree wardens, and reviewing similar guidelines and ordinances for other committees. So that, I'm just telling you all about that, that that's happening. The thing that I'm asking you about tonight is that, um, the city has gotten grants, project canopy grants in the past. Usually with help from, like, Green Ellsworth or the Garden Club or Frenchman Bay Conservancy. And now the Arbor Commission would like to lead a project canopy grant application to bring in funding for a rejuvenated urban, urban forestry program, for an urban forestry program for our city. And so people on the commission have been involved in applying for these grants in the past, so they're very knowledgeable about how to apply for the grant. But they only want to go into the work of applying for the grant if we all agree we would like them to do that. So we can apply to, up to, for up to a $12,000 grant, which needs to be matched by the city. But the match can be covered either entirely in part by in-kind contributions, like staff time, use of equipment, donated materials, like using trees that we grew in our community tree nursery, or volunteer time, including from Arbor Commission members, nonprofit community volunteers, as well as, like, actual money, money from the city. So, um, I don't know if we have to vote on this. I know I said action, um, but, so maybe we do vote to say, yes, Arbor Commission, please move forward and apply for this $12,000 grant to, um, bring in money for rejuvenated urban forestry program. Does that make sense? And/or are there questions? But no hard questions about trees, because I'm the only person on that who doesn't actually know anything.
And I think also from that commission meeting, last time we had this, our, our match was all done through in-kind services.
It was.
You know, how we, but like, we didn't actually have any funds, so just throw that out there.
In the past, we have not had funds. And it's, I don't know that we, that we necessarily will need to, although we might need to.
Yeah, I would agree that we probably have enough resources to continue doing in-kind.
Yeah.
With the, uh, Frenchman Bay True Growth Project, would those trees be used for this and would those be in-kind donations?
They could, it's one of the things that could be used as in-kind donation.
There's a lot of value in tree there. I mean, I don't know how much a tree costs, but it seems a lot.
Yeah.
Depends on how big it is.
Counselor Howard?
Could you give me an example of where this tree or trees would be planted?
Well, the whole point of applying for this money is to make, um, is to basically make the plan for what, the question that you're asking, like, we as a city, for what, the question that you're asking, like, we as a city, where should we put trees? What kind of trees should we put there? Do we have a plan for how we maintain those? Like, that's our urban forestry plan? That's what we're getting money to make. And so then all of these really smart people who know about stuff like that will have input into that, so that we're making smart decisions. So one example I learned about at the commis, at the committee meeting is, like, if you plant big oak trees on the side of the road, then they grow into the power lines, and then the power companies cut them down and mangle them, and they look weird. If you're smart about it, you know what kind of tree to plant there that won't grow high enough to interfere with the lines. So it's that kind of knowledge that would go into a plan.
But when I go into Branch Pond Forest Trail and plant a tree, we're going to do it somewhere.
So, if I may, Mr. O'Halloran, the last canopy grant that we got, applied for and got, the trees that are planted along the side of Rite Aid, the, the High Street side of Rite Aid, I think there's five of them, those were all paid for through a project canopy grant, and the city matched in-kind with our labor. Our highway department dug the holes and set the trees and...
So its intent is for everyone to enjoy, not...
Yeah, yes, like, yes, everyone to enjoy, and also like, you know, trees, again, I'm not the smart one on this, but like, trees help our planet, they protect it from erosion and things like that, so...
There was also a project canopy at the Norton Park. There were some trees there.
Yeah, and so the great thing about this Arbor Commission and these amazing people who are just coming for free and giving all this knowledge is, they already have applied for these grants successfully in the past, they know how to do it. They just want our approval before they put in the effort, that when the time comes, they're going to come here and we're going to be like, oh, yeah, yeah, we did want you to do that. And we do accept that money.
So, I'm sorry, so this is a planning grant, though, not a, to, to plan, to make a plan of where we need trees, is that what this is?
Right.
I just want to...
I'm like 90% sure that that's, it's, it's to fund our urban forestry program. So I don't know if it's completely 100% all planning versus some planning and some action, but it is all towards the end point of...
If it's like the last one, they identified locations, and then they brought locations, so they received the funding, and they identified locations, and then we worked with them to narrow down, because of right-of-way issues and other things, to what, what would work. And that was when the Rite Aid, Rite Aid district was, was identified, so... I think, and I'm not sure, because I haven't, I haven't attended that meeting, but I think it's probably a similar situation, where they'll identify locations throughout the city where potentially we could plant trees, and then it'll be up to the city and that committee to work through, you know, which ones we actually want to plant.
Yeah, and the only, the only question I can't quite answer, I don't quite remember, although I can figure that out for you, is how much of this $12,000 is just in creating the plan for us to work from, versus also like, like you said, actually choosing, like, moving forward with the plan, choosing specific trees and putting them someplace. But it's all in, towards the mission of the Arbor Committee, the Arbor Commission, to plan and operate within that plan, to create outcomes.
So I understand it, it's $12,000 that they would go out and get, so it's not the city's money, and it's going to be used for planning and/or purchasing trees?
Yeah.
And then the city's obligations would be in-kind support, most likely?
Most likely. Yeah, mo, generally with the kind of grant, you have to prove that the city is behind you. So our agreement allows them to say, the city is behind us in this project, and is willing to commit. And like I said, I'm not, we're not making a specific commitment of dollars, but it's acknowledged that in the past, in-kind donations have been adequate.
I think this has been done every three years to continue applying what these project canopy...
Great.
...also to raise, and we're on year three, so it's due.
And it sounds like you, you're looking for us to support, again, the intention?
Yeah.
And that they will come forward with a specific proposal that will then be the next step.
Correct.
But if we at this point say, trees are stupid, then that would be good information for them to have.
Correct. They shouldn't bother putting in that...
Not that anyone is going to say that.
Sure, but they shouldn't bother putting in that effort if we say we don't support this.
So we can say...
And I think if we officially support it by making a motion and making a vote, they can put that on their application, as the city has officially, like, supported this.
Do you have a proposed motion?
My proposed motion is to approve an Arbor Commission application for a project canopy grant. Or, or, or anyone else who wants to make a different proposal?
For them to make an application, but don't, not approve an application, right?
Approve for them to initiate an app, approve for them to apply.
Second.
It's been a tough night. Discussion? All those in favor?
Sorry, I tried to make that quick and it just wasn't.
No, it's okay.
Okay, so... We have item 18, would be for the approval of the sale of surplus property.
Excellent. So essentially, we had a yard sale, and we got rid of a bunch of, for lack of a better term, stuff that we just didn't need any longer. Mostly vehicles related. So I'll go down through the list. There are a couple items that we've decided not to sell because of the, they have more value than what was, they were bid for. But to start out, number one is a Boss Plow 8-foot super trip edge straight blade. It hasn't been used for a couple of years. And the high bid for that piece of equipment was $200. So I'm asking that you accept the $200 bid for that plow. The number, number two was a '07 Chevy pickup truck that we didn't get any bids on, so we will not be selling that. Number three is a 1995 International Dump Truck, for lack of a better description. And the high bid on that was $600, and the highway foreman, Adam, has asked that we deny that bid and keep that. He says that they can scrap it for more than the $600 bid, so he would like to not accept that $600 bid on that 1995 International 4900 DT 466 Dump Truck. Number four is a 2000 John Deere Backhoe Loader, and the high bid for that was[1098.22][1098.25]$929. And that, the high bid was, for that was James Butto, and we ask that you allow that sale to transpire for the $929 for the 2000 John Deere Backhoe. Number five is a 2017 Ford Explorer Police Interceptor with 108,000 miles on it. It has some electrical issues, and the high bid for that vehicle was $4,125 to an Ed Gray. We ask that you would approve that sale. Number six was a 2009 Chevy 1500 Extended Cab Pickup Truck. The high bid for that was $1,000. We would ask that you would deny that, refuse that bid, as that truck has more value than $1,000 that we can seek to sell elsewhere. Number seven was a 2011 RMV Spalding MFG Dual-Axle Trailer, formerly our hotbox trailer for pavement. And that high bid was $500 to David Chappa, and we ask that you accept that bid, $500 for that trailer. Number eight was a 2017 Ford Explorer Police Interceptor with 132,000 miles on it, and the high bid for that was $2,050. And we would ask that you accept that bid for that vehicle. Number nine, a 2015 Chevrolet Two-Wheel Drive Pickup with 106,000 miles on it. And the high bid for that vehicle was $3,700 to a Frank Ryan, and we ask that you accept that bid. Number 10 is a 2005 Sundance 17-foot Fiberglass Boat. And the high bid for number 10 was to a James Butto for $1,491. We ask that you accept that bid. Number 11 was a 2003 Starcraft 16 Aluminum Foot Boat. And the high bid for that... Oh, I'm sorry.
Did you skip one?
Yeah, I skipped number 10. Number 10 was the 2005 Sundance 17-foot. The high bid for number 10 was $866. We ask that you accept that bid. The 2003 Starcraft Aluminum 16-foot Boat, number 11, the high bid was $1,491. We ask that you accept that bid. And number 12 is a York Tobehine Road Sweeper, and the high bid for that was $500 to Nancurvis Trucking, and we ask that you accept that bid. And we ask in the motion, if you are so inclined to accept all of those bids, that you also authorize us to move on to the next highest bidder, should the high bidder back out. We have contacted all of the high bidders and notified them that they did receive the bid, and most, some have paid, most have expressed still an interest, with the exception of...
Two.
Two?
Two have not made any contact back.
Right. One, Mark Kaplan, who's the high bidder on one of the, on number eight, the Cruiser. We have no contact information for that individual. So, and what was the other one, Tony? Do you remember?
I think, I think it's actually Nancurvis.
Nancurvis Trucking.
I think more called, but I haven't seen any payment, so that doesn't happen any...
Any questions from the group on our yard sale?
For those, you asked about accepting the, the second highest bidder. Are those still within? I saw some of them had a minimum bid. Do they still meet the standards that Adam thought was acceptable?
Always waiting to see what you...
I'd just like to, I don't want to discourage future sales, and I think if you... I realize you have the right to accept or reject all bids, but I would think in this case, these are all pretty small valued items. I would think that the city would just put this to bed and give it all to the high bidder and not pull out based on valuations. By the time the city spends junking this asset and resources of the city spending junking this asset, or recycling it, or selling it for scrap, or whatever you want to call it, you're going to spend everything you accept. And I would just make the suggestion that if there's a bid on the product, let's take the high bid and let's move on. There's, the city has more things to do than to mess around with an opinion of value. I also think that it discourages people that did bid on it not to bid again. So if we're going to get rid of some surplus, let's get rid of it.
Did those two, the number three and number six, just to clarify, were there minimum bids put on?
Yeah.
And so it adds...
They met the minimum bid.
Was it?
They did meet the minimum bid. But I would just, I would just ask that you consider your staff and their input in, before you make any decisions as to what to do with those pieces of equipment. Because staff is aware of things that perhaps contribute beyond just the dollar price tag, so...
If I may, then why wasn't the minimum bid higher?
Because the intention was to get rid of the equip, the surplus equipment.
Again, I would suggest getting rid of it, especially if they've met the minimum bid.
Yeah, I could see how that would be frustrating, if you meet a minimum bid and then...
It also jeopardizing integrity of our bid process as well.
You want everyone to bid next time.
Do we have a motion? There you go.
I mean, I'll make a motion to...
Councilor Hallen?
Oh, yeah, no, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead. No, oh my dear, you go ahead.
No, because you're going to make a different motion than what I was going to make, so go for it.
I would move that the city accept the high bid of each auctioned item or each advertised item in this round of surplus equipment.
Do you have a second?
Yeah, I would second that, with the friendly amendment of Glenn's suggestion of moving to the next highest, if those first highest were unable to contact.
That's fair.
Question, does that cover the, if they cover the minimum bid, the minimum bid requirement? I don't know if any in question would...
I think they all have. I think all of the bids are in excess of the minimum.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
I mean, my only hesitation is kind of what Glenn said, which is, I have a hard time if the city staff is making a recommendation and they know, I have a hard, it's hard for me to say I know better than what they think about what they can do with those, that equipment. That's my only hesitation about it.
No, I, I'm sure that he's right, that, that they could get more value selling it for parts, but it should have, the minimum bid should have been higher.
We should have just made the bid that high in the first place. Yeah, I hear that too.
Further discussion? All those in favor? Item 18, scheduling of workshops for homelessness. Scheduling of workshops for discussion, well, this is what it says. Scheduling of workshops for the homelessness in Ellsworth and Watershed Natural Resources. Councilor Stein?
Yeah, hi.
I know, you know, an hour and a half ago, I thought, ooh, this is going to be a quick thing.
Yeah, I did too.
We had, just to catch up to the new members here, we had a meeting a few months ago, where a number of, of folks from the community came to present some thoughts and give us sort of a holistic, comprehensive view of both watershed, you know, resource protection and other sets of organizations, gave us a view of the unhoused population in Ellsworth, the barriers to accessing resources, and then what those resources were, and sort of where we're at holistically. It should have, looking back on it, probably should have happened when we had more time, in a workshop type of a setting. So, you know, there's no action here, but I just wanted to get a sense of if this new council is interested in a workshop on either of those two topics, and if so, which one more pressing? And what sort of timeline? I'd be happy to do sort of what I did before, which was to, to contact, for example, Amae Shelter, the Home Inc. Maine, Healthy Academia First, the city's general assistants, Tina runs that program, Habitat for Humanity, and any other suggestions that anybody has. that program, Habitat for Humanity, and any other suggestions that anybody has with the goal of giving this council a, as comprehensive as possible, a view of homelessness, housing, you know, for, for lack of a, of a housing department within the city, basically educating ourselves on that topic, because I think it's only a matter of time before what we're seeing elsewhere in the state in Bangor currently and, you know, that's been happening in Portland. Uh, comes i- in a more dire way to Ellsworth than we're already hearing, you know, Downey's Community Partner looking for heating funds for people, et cetera. So the more that we know, when things do come across this table, the more, you know, intelligently we can react and make, make good decisions that help the entire community rather ju- than just, you know, being reactive to certain, uh, certain symptoms of the entire homelessness crisis, we can react in a way that maybe is proactive. If anybody has thoughts or wants to ask me to, uh, by email, ask for some dates when we could have either of those, uh, workshops, I'd be happy to do that. Anybody has thoughts on which we want to have, have them first?
Yes. I thought we had agreed, I thought at the last meeting that that was how that ended, was that we were going to have those. Am I not remembering that right?
No, you are.
Okay.
Counselor, why?
The Watershed Natural Resources, can you explain that a little bit, what that, the focus of that workshop would be?
So that was in concert with, um, excuse me, the Comprehensive Plan, which has a section, uh, sectioned off for, um, natural resources and also forestry and agriculture. But the view of some members of the community, namely Green Ellsworth, Ellsworth Green Plan, Downey Semifederation, um, Mary Blackstone, who's in a number of those organizations, and, um, French River Bay Conservancy and some others, sort of thinking that, seeing the, the, the slow pace of, of ordinance changes, just 'cause that's how they go, that talking about these issues sooner than later would be more effective, um, figuring out how we can actually enact ordinance changes, uh, and start talking about it before results from the, um, Comprehensive Plan start coming in, so that when we learn about what, what is most dire from the comp plan, we can be ready to tackle ordinances and, and hook it, things like where to put in, uh, watershed protections, um, and residence areas around, like, the lake fronts and things like that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thoughts, um, yes? I love, I love the concept of being able to approach these in tandem, that you really, as we're talking about housing, talking about housing while we're protecting the natural resources, I think is the, the smart way to do things. When you're talking about the, the, um, the homeless crisis, I'd also love to see in that, I need information about whatever we have data on current housing units and the construction that's happening now to better understand our current housing stock. And I know there's, I'm not asking for a large-scale inventory, but simply whatever staff already has, um, on that information so that we can put that into the, here's, here's the issue and the crisis and the risk and here's what we have so far, to be able to offer both of those. And I think if it's maybe one workshop on, on, um, the homeless crisis, another workshop on the natural resource sector, and then maybe a conversation about how you manage both at the same time would be interesting. And hopefully line up well with the work the comp plan committee is doing.
Yes, that's right.
If, if we do that, um, for the unhoused, um, I, so Bangor just had a, a workshop on this, this issue and they had some really great speakers from very different aspects of the, of the problem, from mental health to drug use to just not being able to find a home. Um, and I, if we did that, um, I would like to see all of that myself. It was incredible, um, I, I was watching some of that and it, it was an incredible discussion and I learned a lot. And actually, um, former counselor Dale Hamilton, um, was one of the panelists for that. And, um, I think if we're going to, I, I think it should be a learning process that that way. I, I would like to learn a little bit more about it myself, I, um, just, just so, um, we can have an understanding of how this, how this is all working within the state of Maine and why, um, because it, it is, in my understanding, it's, it's not a lack of houses or housing, it's, it's a much bigger issue than that. So I would like to have that in there, too, and the watershed resources. I think that's a completely different, um, subject from the unhoused, how we're gonna protect our resources in the watersheds. So I'm, I'm not sure if we, I think we would probably need two for that. And that definitely, um, that, that definitely would be Green Ellsworth, but it needs to be math and planning and, um, and, and a good understanding, for him to be able to provide information and a good understanding of our ordinances that we have now for protection, um, because Branch Lake has its own and as we all know and we have, um, I, I would like to, I think it would be a really great, um, opportunity for the council to learn about one of our most precious ordinances. Um, so I, I, I can't see doing both of those in an hour and a half.
Yeah, it's a lot.
Workshop.
If you had to pick one first of the two, if, if anybody had some opinion on that?
Almost, yes.
Um, yes, yeah.
Especially as we get into winter.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, would December, mid-December be too early?
Maybe January?
Yeah.
So much going on in the city right now.
Four hundred days after, after the holidays.
Yep.
Yeah.
Are you just gonna send out some dates for us?
Yeah, I'll, I'll send some dates. I'll also, um, after I hear back from folks who spoke last time, I'll, I'll send a list out of here's who I was thinking of asking so that everyone can send me, well, what about this, if there's a link to the Bangor Council discussion as well, so we can watch that.
Yeah, that would be great.
That would be great.
Thank you.
Cool, thanks.
Thanks, John. Um, item nineteen, council comments. Do we have any comments tonight? And I do apologize.
Pretty fun. One, just very excited to be here. It's great working with you all. At the Meet the Candidates forum, I made a promise to fix a slide at Norton Park.
Yes, we did. First thing we're gonna do.
So, uh, I would, but I obviously know there's a process and I don't wanna do, do anything out of turn, so I guess the question for staff is, what's the process to inquire about how the types of infrastructure is done and...
So we have the slide.
Okay.
The problem is, is...
Claim, claim card is right there.
It's not the right one because they don't make the slide anymore for that playground set, so we're currently exploring whether we can potentially alter the slide slightly so that it can work, but then does that diminish any, or does that create a liability for the city? So it is being worked on, but the shorter answer is shy of replacing the entire playground, that slide may never be replaced. Because if...
If it's too much of a liability?
If MMA won't cover us, if we alter the slide so that it'll fit, then the other, only other option would be essentially to board that off so that there's no slide there and then look at potential for, yeah.
It would be so sad.
We do have a slide.
Okay, so it's, we're working on it, is that, okay.
So we are working on it.
The, uh, playgrounds and that particular playground come up almost every Recreation Commission meeting.
Okay.
That slide, particular slide comes up as well.
Okay.
But I'll, I'll talk about, it's tomorrow morning as well, so I'll bring that up and let them know they have a champion.
Great.
The slideboard.
Yes. Okay, thank you for that, Dave.
Could we approve this guy to build a new frame for the existing slide?
You don't wanna approve me to build anything.
All right. What is it?
Do you need a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Some move?
Second.
All in favor?